Okay, Madam Chair, the floor is yours.
Madam Chair, you're muted.
I'm muted, I apologize. Thank you. Uh, roll call, please. Uh, Mr. Snibbridge.
What?
Mr. Langham.
Present.
Mr. Aiken.
Present.
Mr. Collins.
Present.
Ms. Panato.
Present.
Ms. Weewell.
Present.
Okay, thank you. The floor is yours, Mr. Snibbridge.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, we'll begin by asking if there are any requests for withdrawals or deferrals from the 11 o'clock timeframe.
Yes, Two Hills Boroughs. Uh, we're gonna be requesting a deferral today.
Let me read the information and then you can explain. That would be case BOA 1563584 with the address of Two Hills Borough Street. Uh, if you will identify yourself, but listen to what.
Sure. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Um, I'm Brian Goldson with New Atlantic Development with a business address of 236 Huntington Ave in Boston. I'm here today requesting a deferral for Two Hills Borough Street in Dorchester. During the BPDA review process, there were some minor changes requested to a number of parking spaces to be provided by the project. Uh, we've made those changes, but we were scheduled to be heard prior to those plans being submitted. The plans have been updated and have now been submitted and once reviewed by staff, we're ready to be heard, uh, at the next possible date that's convenient for the board.
Thank you. Ms. Snibber?
June 4th is the date, Madam Chair.
Okay, may I have a motion?
Motion to defer to June 4th.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Snibbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. See you then.
Thank you very much.
Any further requests for withdrawals and deferrals in this timeframe?
Yes, uh, for, this is Greg McCarthy for 4 to 6 East Springfield.
Okay, so that, that's referring to case BOA 1576209 with the address of 4 to 6 East Springfield Street. Uh, would you go ahead and explain to us, McCarthy?
Yeah, we, after, uh, community meetings and advisory review with Landmark Commission, we, uh, made some changes to the plans which, um, haven't yet been, um, changed over at ISD, so they're not the plan that we would have been presenting tonight. Um, so we just need to get those filed for the, uh, for the presentation.
Okay, uh, what's the next available date, Snibber?
Madam Chair, the date for this is July 16.
Okay, uh, may I have a motion?
A motion to defer, was it July 16th? Sorry.
Yes, that's correct, remember Collins?
To July 16th.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Snibbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Mr. Co- uh, Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries. See you then.
Thank you. So with that, then we move-
Madam Chair, do you see a hand raise? I'm not sure if they're a deferral or not.
Okay, uh, I don't see it, so.
Oh, yeah, um, show me. Who can give to request a deferral? I sent a request, I don't give you. That was funny, um, close, uh, I did ask her to put a message in the chat, she had a question, but, or, wait.
Yep. Okay, um, please proceed.
With that, we move on to case BOA 1552645 with the address of 243D Savin Hill Avenue. If the applicant can draw the representative present, if they approve, quite report.
Uh, good evening, Madam, uh, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Uh, my name is James Christopher, uh, 686 Architects with a business address of 10 Forbes Road, um, in Branch Tree. I'm here today on behalf of, uh, Michael McNally. Um, the proposal before you is to construct a single-family home at 243D lot. If you could go to the next slide, please. Um, so the lot is a rear lot, it's in behind another lot, it's accessed off of a 15-foot private driveway which is at the top of this drawing here. Um, so the only zoning violation that we're seeking relief for is frontage. Um, we have, uh, the, this is a 1F 7,000 district, we have, uh, uh, 10,078 square foot lot, we're proposing to construct a, uh, a 4,031 square foot, single-family home, uh, with four bedrooms, it's two and a half stories, it's 34 feet in height. Um, dimensionally, it meets all the setback requirements from the front side and rear, uh, oh, uh, Madam, Madam Chair, uh, it appears that these are my previous iteration of my drawings. Um-
Okay.
The, I can continue, the change is minimal, it's the removal of, um, dormers and, and height, and then some reduced space in the basement. Um, there's no change to the dimensional setbacks or the zoning requirements.
Can you elaborate on the, uh, frontage requirement? So what are you, what are you doing and what's required?
Um, basically, the-
It's hard without the images, I don't know if any of the images that work-
Yeah, my images, yeah, if you go down to the, scroll down, um, if the-
That's, uh, where it was-
On the, on the site plan, if you zoom in, on the site plan there, yep, that one there.
Thank you.
So what, what this plan illustrates is that this building is landlocked off of the street. Um, so you see our, our property lines here, there are residences in between our property and Savin Hill Ave. So this building does not front on a public way. So the only violation that we're seeking relief for is the frontage, 60 feet is the required frontage, um, but this building, this site does not address the street, it sits in behind.
So how do people, how, how would the residents, uh-
So there is a, there is a common passageway here that exists, that already feeds two or three houses that exist to the rear here. Um, there's already, I can't remember if it's two or three residences that exist to the back of the property, off, that are already in a rear condition off of Savin Hill Avenue. Um, so the only relief that is sought is that frontage. Any construction that would happen on this site would have the same violation. Um, we had a long process with the community, um, to, to, um, make revision to the profit project, to try to make it more accessible, uh, acceptable to the community. Um, that includes, if you go down to the elevations of this plan, I can show the changes that we made. Um, but the, 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 the floor plan is, is, next slide, please.
Let's, yeah, thank you.
So we're proposing, if you zoom out a little bit, um, a little bit more. So that, the, the bottom of this drawing here is the, is our common access off of the common passageway, which, and then would enter into a roundabout where we have a two-car garage, the front door is here, which, uh, can't see my screen, but is on the L shape which addresses Savin Hill Ave, but because of the buildings between our property and Savin Hill Ave, there is no frontage and there's no way to create frontage. The lot does not have frontage on Morrissey Boulevard, which is to the rear, so that is not an option. Um, so basically, it's, it's, as I said, dimensionally, the project is compliant, meets the open space, meets the height, we, the open space required for a project of this nature is 1,750 square feet, we have 6,045 square feet of open space on this site. The, um, all the side rear yard and front yards are met dimensionally. Again, the only violation is the, uh, the frontage, we have an FAR of .4, it's, it's proposed to be a two-and-a-half-story building. If you go down to the next slide, please. Those dormers, um, on that roof plan there have all been removed as a part of the community process, I did submit those back to ISD, I, I, I don't know how they didn't get back here. Um, so on the first level, uh, this is the first floor plan, we have the garage and then the, the front door there, and living space, uh, kitchen, dining, living area on the first floor, and a bathroom, and a mudroom area. As we go up to the second floor, we have four bedrooms, um, including an en suite. And the basement plan, if we, so the, as a part of the community process, we had, you can see on this lower plan here, on the bottom half of that page, we had a large, uh, two large storage rooms in the basement. Um, as we went through that discussion with the community, they were concerned about it being converted to living space. Um, so we, we did shrink those rooms down, they're both, they're, uh, under 300 square feet now, they do have direct sa- direct access to the rear patio, um, the owner intends to store, um, patio furniture and such in that area. Next slide, please. So this is the, um, front and side elevation, um, the front elevation, you can see the, on that, um, the front door does address Savin Hill Avenue, to the right of the front door, we have the, the garage that, the building steps back as it goes up. Um, and then the, the right side illustrates, the, the lower elevation illustrates the left-side elevation. We have a dramatic grade change on the site, so we're trying to work with the, the, um, the site to, to nestle the building on the hill. The, uh, overall height as proposed, this, it's different from this, we did remove four feet of height from this version, this version, I believe, is at like, it's 38 foot nine. Um, our current height is 34 feet, and we've removed all the shed dormers from the main roof. So that roof is now flat, uh, in that there's no protrusions from it, and the overall height has been reduced four foot nine down to 34 feet. Next slide, please. This is the rear elevation, again, that roof overall height has been removed, and those shed dormers on that roof have been removed. Um, we have the walkout area, um, and then on the right side, we have the stair down where the grade changes. Um, and then that next elevation is just the left side, the, the opposite side elevation, um, facing the abutters. Next slide, please. So, uh, that's largely the presentation, I'm happy to answer any questions I can.
So you may be aware, uh, we received a lot of comments in opposition, uh-
Madam Chair.
Me- comments, uh, relating to frontage, related to, uh, flood zone area, uh, and mature trees, among other things. I, can you address some of those-
Certainly.
-comments?
Um, by way of the plantings and the trees, uh, when, after one of the last abutters meetings, I went over and took some additional site photographs, there are mature trees on the site, a lot of the growth on the site is what I would call, you know, scrub brush, it's overgrown, um, weeds and such, but as part of our, should the project be approved, um, we would work with the BPDA very closely, as, as this board knows, we would have to provide them a site plan that illustrates the location of the trees up to a certain caliber on-site, and we would be required to replace them in kind, whatever we remove. Uh, we would also work with the BPDA to create a detailed, uh, and acceptable landscaping plan based off of the, the plantings, uh, and trees that they recommend. On the site drainage, uh, we actually believe that we can improve the drainage on this site, we will be introducing a Caltech system right now, it's kinda hard-packed gravel with, with brush on top of it, and the water runs straight off down towards Morrissey Boulevard. Um, with this project, we will, we will be managed to, we will be responsible to manage the storm water on our site, so we will include a Caltech system, a storm wa- a, a stormwater recharge system. Um, so I think that that will improve the runoff. Um, and by way of height, um, we, we are compliant, um, with the height, we're, we're comparable to the other buildings in the neighborhood, um, and we reduce the height, uh, several ti- a couple of times as we went through the community process. Um, and I feel that a, a two-and-a-half story, 34-foot height in this application is very appropriate.
Okay, other questions from the board?
I'd just like to ask about the access, and, um, can you speak, are there other lots nearby that are accessed in similar fashion?
Yes, on this private way, there are, I, I don't want them to speak, it's two or three houses that are already served, uh, by the private way. Um, this, this lot has access, uh, to the private passage, um, and that's where the, the vehicular access will take place from Savin Hill Ave.
Do those other houses have frontage there on, on our scene?
No, it's the same condition, they're off of, they're off of that private way.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions from the board? Hearing none, I'm gonna open it to public testimony.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Ross Carter, in the mayor's office in Neighborhood Services. Uh, we'd like to defer the judgment of this board at this time, but to give some context, uh, the applicant has completed their community process, and the abutters meeting was held back in 2019 by my predecessor. Uh, that abutters meeting was met with a lot of opposition as well, but I will let the board know specifics in terms of whether there's support or opposition, as they have more accurate files. Uh, however, this applicant did go in front of the Civic Association in the area, and they voted, both in their general membership as well as planning, and those votes are as follows. In the planning committee, the support was voting for four, opposed was 13, and in the general membership, there were 28 in support, 40 opposed, and two that abstained. Likewise, I have a petition on file, and the CBA does as well, with petition with over 40 signatures in, in opposition of this project. At this time, we'd like to defer to this board's judgment, thank you.
Hello, Madam Chair, members of the board, Liam Remus from Council Fitzgerald's office. Um, due to the large amount of local interns and oppositions from residents, our office will let go on record in opposition of the proposal, thank you.
We have a couple raised hands here, Christine and Trish.
Madam Chair?
Oh, go ahead, Trish.
Okay, all right, um, Madam Chair, members of the board, Joe McEver and City Councilor Aaron Murphy's office, would like to go on record in opposition today.
Okay, thank you. And Christine?
Hi, thank you very much, I'm Christine, I'm, um, planning committee chair for the Columbia Savin Hill Civic Association, and I'd like to concur with what Ross said in terms of the voting, um, it's not that it's a single-family home, it has been a very contentious process, um, and, uh, the feeling is that the property itself doesn't fit in, um, we'd like to see a single family there, but, uh, one that is more in accordance with surrounding properties, um, so, uh, and was pretty strong opposition to this particular plan over time.
Thank you, uh, Trish?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, my name is Mitch Beers, um, one of the owners, along with my, um, siblings, who own 239 Savin Hill Avenue, a direct abutter, as well, um, our family's been there for, I believe, over 90 years in Savin Hill, my parents raised the five of us at that home, and this property just is not in compliance with the zone lot, neither, um, with the feel of the community. For us, our house, um, we would have, the design currently has the front door facing the back lot, so their front door and circular driveway and all will be in our backyard, um, intruding on our privacy. Um, the communication over the years since 2019 has been deplorable, and a lot of times, we, um, you know, a, a great word these days in, in all over is transparency, and to say there's been any transparency through these last five years is, is, uh, would just not be truthful, it's been anything but. The design constantly changes, um, the owner says that he's going to make changes, and then, um, at times has brought back the exact same designs. The height is, um, way too high, the, um, as far as the flood zone goes, um, it, the property will abut, uh, already be federal, um, deemed flood zone, Morrissey Boulevard. Um, this property is going to be up on a hill, um, and taking out a lot of the trees, the, um, the natural barriers that exist, essentially making it like a swimming pool. The other thing, um, that we're very concerned about is access. The access, um, I know that, um, the, the prior, um, speaker who, um, spoke in, Mr. Christopher spoke that the access would be through this common private way. Well, that private way was designed a little differently for those houses, it goes straight back, um, to those, those houses off of Savin Hill Ave. This would take, they would go down, begin down that private web, like, and then bang a left behind a house, and then get into that property, it's through an easement, and as far as fire trucks and ambulances and other, um, emergency vehicles, we don't see how that's gonna be accessed at all. Um, I think that, you know, for my family, the history of, we're trying to keep the neighborhoods with that neighborhood feel, it's unique throughout Boston. Um, growing up there, um, with, literally, we have, um, my cousin lives next door, 241, my sisters are 243B in my grandparents' home, they both raised their families in those properties, so the three of our, um, you know, our family is direct abutters to this property, we may have been opposed to this-
Ma'am, can, ma'am, can I ask you a question? You mentioned, um, an easement, uh, that they would need to drive by, so it-
Yes.
They, who, who, who does that, like, who's it belong to, who, you know, is there a, a right to use it, or like, I, I guess, I'm just trying to-
You have a right to use it.
You have a right to use it.
Yeah, the, 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 I, there, there was a, a legal, um, case that was, um, settled over this property involving the front property, uh, my client, and regarding that access, there was, there was a, a question about the property lines, and that, that matter has been settled, as a part of that settlement, the access to that easement is granted.
Okay, tha- thank you. Uh, any, anything to wrap up, Ms. Powers, I believe there are others who wanna speak, so I just wanna give other people an opportunity.
Um, I would just, would I mind, mine up, just saying that as a family who's been in Savin Hill for years, um, and continue, um, to stay in Savin Hill, um, for many more, we hope, um, the opposition is, we're not against building, but this has not been a transparent process, um, and the owner does not seem like, he's already not a good neighbor, and he hasn't even lived there, we would ask that, you know, um, if, it's also, we hear that the property is for sale, which we are also very concerned about.
Thank you. Jessica?
Yep, I have additional, Kevin, are you looking to get testimony here?
Yes, I am, can you hear me?
Yep, can you state your name and address and tell us if you're in support or opposition?
Sure, uh, Kevin Deblar, 2377 Hill Ave, wishing to express my opposition to this proposal, um, and I'll quickly dive into the, the reasons why. Um, my wife and I and our two children live in an abutting property next to Mrs. Powers, um, and, um, I'm disappointed that I even have to come and, and speak to this, I'm an architect, um, with current working experience with a zoning code of over 20 years, um, and I appreciate the job that the board must do today, so, um, Madam Chair and members of the board, uh, the reasons why I believe you should, uh, deny this, uh, application, um, relates to the fact that lot frontage is not just one of the zoning requirements that must be met, it's probably the most important, um, since it relates to service and access to a property. Um, and when you're required to provide 60 and you can pr- not provide any, um, it requires a, uh, a special process that an applicant should, you know, work with, with neighbors and, uh, frankly, the families that live in the back there, um, in a way that, uh, can make a rear lot work. Um, so this is an odd condition in, um, the Dorchester zoning code, um, with the rear lot, um, I don't believe that you should be able to, um, balloon to all the other dimensional requirements that are allowed under 1F 7,000, um, when you can't meet the basic, uh, service and access, um, issues, so, um, there was also confusion about where the front entry, um, would go, and that's been taken off the refusal letter apparently, but I think that just only underscores the fact that this is confusing, um, from a standpoint of design and from, um, what our, uh, neighbors and, and what these families will expect when they look in their backyards to see the front yard or a garage, um, it really is not congruent. Uh, finally, the, the last thing I'll say is that the, um, proximity to the flood zone is, is not something that anyone should take lightly, especially so close to DCR, or abutting DCR property, um, we are, would be forever altering the natural capacity, uh, to manage storm water. Um, and again, um, I am, uh, wanting to make sure that I, I represent, um, you know, other families that are abutting this property who should be speaking today, but, uh, my wife Jennifer and I have been, um, trying to understand other neighbors', uh, perspectives on this, and we've collected and, and sent to you 40, uh, opposition signatures who support, uh, the positions of the families abutting this property, and, uh, thank you again, uh, Madam Chair, members of the board.
Thank you, there are further questions, so just please-
Madam Chair, can I respond to that just briefly?
Can we finish public testimony first? Thank you.
Michael, are you looking to get testimony?
Uh, yes, yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, sir. Can I say hello to that?
Madam, sure, sure. Um, my name is Michael McNally, I am the owner of that home's property from five years.
Okay, Mr. McNally, can you please wait, then, we're, we're see, we're listening to public testimony, and then the applicant will have a chance to respond, so-
Okay.
We'll, we'll come back to you.
Very good, sorry.
Uh, Madam Chair, I have no additional raised hands at the moment.
Okay, so, yes, if you could, uh, I don't, if it's Mr. Christopher or Mr. McNally, comment on, uh, I think you-
I would just like to respond, thank you, Madam Chair, to a couple of, uh, Mr. Deblar's comments. Uh, this condition exists in several instances along Savin Hill and Morrissey Boulevard already, there are already several rear apartments that, buildings that are in between Savin Hill Ave and Morrissey Boulevard. Um, you know, we appreciate the concern for life safety, um, there's already houses back here, there's a 15-foot wide passageway that an ambulance could easily access in the event of a true emergency, and plenty of turnaround room on our site should it have to access the abutter sites. In addition to that, if life safety is still primarily a concern, Mr. McNally has committed to me that he would sprinkle this building, or include a standpipe in the rear of the property for the other properties that are back there. Um, so i- i- in way of likes, life safety, uh, I believe that we, we have considered those things, um, and this condition exists all along Morrissey Boulevard, there are several other buildings that have very similar setup as this, um, so we do not believe it's a life safety issue.
How would you handle construction, given that you have no street frontage?
We have a very large area on our site where we would be able to stage, um, the, the, the building is set back, if, as we access the driveway area, there's plenty of room to stage, and I believe that we could do it primarily from our site.
Primarily means what? So if you're primarily, that suggests-
I, I haven't done a construction management plan, Madam Chair, but, but in looking at the- but, but in looking at the site and the size of what we deal with, I believe we could take deliveries, store material, everything will happen interior to the site.
Okay, other questions from the board? Can't see you guys, all right?
I'd like to just make a comment, but I'm chair to the board members is that what's primarily in front of us is the street frontage matter and it sounds like there are other properties in similar situations. And I hear a lot of the concern and the votes and the process of the timeframe seems like it's related to people or individuals or process or, you know, the location of the house there. And I'm trying to understand, I guess, in my mind, if it was a, you know, different proponent or a smaller building, would this be okay? And generally, the, even, even if it was just with the passageway. So I don't know if anyone else is dealing with that because it seems that if there was some smaller, some smaller building that was brought here by a different proponent, the problem would still be that it's accessed by the passageway, even if it all fits within the current base zoning, which this building otherwise does. So I think my, the point I'm just trying to make is that we're being, there's a lot of items in front of us that aren't part of the actual zoning refusal from the elongated, you know, five-year community process, it seems. And that just presents a lot of challenges in analyzing the project. Thanks for giving me that moment.
Thank you, Mr. Aiken. Any other questions or comments from the board? Okay, hearing none, is, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve with BPDA design review.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Snubridge?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
The chair also votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Next, we have two companion cases. First is case BOA 1582608 with the address of 34R Williams Avenue. Along with that, we have case BOA 1587525 with the address of 34th through 36 Williams Avenue. If the applicant in or their representative is present, please explain to the board.
We see a raised hand here. I just sent a request to make you a panelist. Are you looking to give testimony? Sorry, looking to provide context for this proposal? You're muted at your. Thanks. Can, can you raise your hand if you're on or unmute yourself if you're after this proposal? Okay, middle, I'm sorry. Okay, I see the name, okay. Mr. Vias, are you looking, are you going to be speaking on behalf of this project?
I have my architect, Del Bellis, my young, she was trying to get the address published.
I sent a request to make her a panelist. Okay, you're ready. All right, once you become a panelist.
Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you now, thank you, go ahead.
Perfect. Hello, board members and members of the board. We would like to present this project for an approval for the detached ADU on 36 Williams Avenue. Here you can see in the back, it's a detached unit in the back of the property. It's an existing barn structure, non-occupied, just a storage. We'll be keeping the same envelope of the property. We'll just be adding a dormer to additional space on the second floor. You go down. You can see here in the survey or this picture, this property is on the rear of existing dwelling unit. You can see here in the images, we won't be changing the existing footprint. We'll just be adding the dormer, like I mentioned, into the interior of the property. So we won't be affecting any of the Butters neighbors. We had a meeting with the commission and nobody disagreed to this property. They agree the owner will be using this property to, to have his daughter into this unit. If you go down. Yes, so here we're going to have living space on the first floor and a, and a two-bedroom or a bedroom and an office in the second floor to allow her, his daughter now that is in college, to be able to move in when she's done. And the owner would like to say something.
Yeah, good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Ronnie Vias and I'm the owner of 36 Williams Avenue High Park. We have lived in this home for nearly twelve years now and we have been residents of High Park for over twenty years. I subscribe, we're just seeking for Sony believes to convert this two-story barn we have in our residence into a, an additional dwelling unit. This space will primarily serve as a living area for our daughter, as Del Bellis mentioned. She's currently junior in college. Presently, our, my elderly mother-in-law is staying in what used to be our daughter's room, so the additional space will be very helpful for accommodating her when she comes home from school and after she graduates from college. We understand that the zoning code is currently under review and projects like ours will probably be allowed to survive in the near future. Nonetheless, we chose to proceed to the community process and we did not encounter any objections during any of the attendees attended Butters meetings. We appreciate your time and thank you for considering our request.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
Madam Chair, a question. So in the plans that I reviewed for this, I did not see these elevations with the dormer and I'm just wondering how they, is this consistent with what the BPDA recommended to us that the structure maintain a sloped roof line? Is Mr. Hampton on?
Well, these were the drawings that we presented to both community meetings and we did provide one set and then talk with inspector and talked to him. He was able to get the dormer so we can get better headroom into the bedrooms. And he said, that's okay. And then this is, this is the set that we presented in both community meetings.
Right, but did the, I think the BPDA reviews a set as well as the board receives a set of plans and the dormer was not on the set I saw. I'm not sure if any of the board members had something different. But I'm also just curious if Mr. Hampton is on and can speak to the recommendation, whether this is consistent.
I believe he stepped away for a meeting.
Okay.
Are there other questions from the board? Okay, hearing none, is there public testimony?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Cecily Graham with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. ONS hosted an abutters meeting for the applicant on March twentieth. They met with the West Fairmont Hill Neighborhood Association on March twenty-fifth of 2024. The group is still deliberating, however, there are no comments at this time. And at this time, our office would like to defer to the judgment of the chairwoman, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cruz?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is Gabriel Cruz from Councilor Pettis' office. The council would like to go on record that he is in support of this project, thank you.
Thank you. Shirley? I sent a request to mute you. Then I'll go Craig Martin, six, I sent a request to mute you as well. Okay, David, Shirley, okay, go ahead, Shirley.
Hi.
Hello. All right, yep, can you state your name and address and let us know if you are in support of opposition?
Opposition of.
What's your name and address?
My name is Shirley Lemon at 40 Rexford Street.
Then you're here to present on Rexford Street, which is coming up later, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll, we'll get to you then, we're on Williams Avenue right now, thank you.
Okay.
All right, go ahead. Craig, can you hear us?
Hi, yes. Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. Thank you, Craig Martin with the High Park Neighborhood Association. Not speaking for or against the proposal. Just wanted to make sure that there isn't, make sure that there isn't confusion. We've, we've gone through a process with BPDA. Now, with, they're going to be looking at every neighborhood determining what type of ADUs are appropriate. And they said there's no way there's going to be a blanket decision going to be specific to each neighborhood. And I think it's a little problematic that we're identifying this as a detached ADU instead of simply a single-family residence. Because BPDA is going to write through the end of the summer, they're going to be meeting with all communities determining what type of ADUs will work in each and every neighborhood, they're going to be specific. But we're hoping that after clarifying, clear this confusion out that it shouldn't be a detached ADU that is a single-family residence. I thank you.
Okay, well, thank you, thank you.
Okay, so we have no additional raised hands at the moment.
Okay, any other questions from the board?
Mrs. Weewell, I just want to note, you are correct. So the original drawings that, that I have show one bedroom. Not two with a dormer, so with, with that, Madam Chair, you taking a motion now?
I'm happy to take a motion if there is one.
I mean, I don't think we approve it just with BPDA design review. Special attention to that dormer and roof.
Is there a second?
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Aiken, were you trying to make a separate comment or?
I just wanted to weigh in that I would agree with this, but it was also, the material was sent to us. It was just sent yesterday, though, that is consistent with what we saw today.
Okay.
But that's different than what we were presented in the plan set. But I don't think it changes this vote, I think the vote would be consistent with that.
Okay, so Mr. Snubridge?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries, good luck.
Thank, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Since we are in the 1130 timeframe, I'll ask if there are any requests for withdrawals or deferrals from this timeframe.
Can you raise your hand if you're looking for the vote? I haven't seen raised hands, Madam Chair.
Okay, Mr. Snubridge?
So next, we have case BOA. Next, we have case BOA 1553455 with the address of 1052 High Park Avenue. If the applicant and or their representative is present, please explain to the board.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Snubridge, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Ryan Spitz, Adams and Maranti, business address with 168 Eighth Street, first floor, South Boston. Joining me today is the owner, Eli Sakiki, as well as the project architect, John DeStone. This is a proposal to combine two parcels and erect a new three-story, twelve-unit residential dwelling with twelve surface parking spaces located within a 1F 5,000 sub-district on a 11,151 square foot lot. One parcel is currently a vacant commercial storefront and the other parcel is a deliberated single-family. The property is located along High Park Avenue, a mixed-use commercial corridor which is populated with many commercial uses and residential dwellings on a transient-oriented thoroughfare. The erection of a multifamily dwelling is in line with the planning goals of increasing the city's housing stock along with commercial corridors and area service by transit. The applicant understands the need to create more affordability housing opportunities and is required to provide thirteen percent of the units as affordable, but has committed to an increased percentage of seventeen percent to offer two units as affordable. All units will have two bedrooms ranging from approximately eight hundred and seventy square feet to nine hundred square feet. The basement will consist of storage for each unit and the mechanicals. First floor of the interior of the building will consist of those four units within the building. The surface parking for twelve vehicles in the rear will be accessed by an existing curb cut on the left-hand side of the property. There is also a second curb cut on the right-hand side of the property that will be restored to the neighborhood. Also, in the rear, there will be bike storage as well as an enclosed area for trash. Units five through eight will be located on the second floor and units nine through twelve will be located on the third floor. We have violations for the use. We are proposing twelve units in a 1F sub-district, but proposal is in line with the planning goals of Boston 2030 of increasing housing stock along commercial corridors and transient areas as well as providing more affordability options. We have a floor area ratio violation. We are proposing a 1.17 and a 0.5 is compliant. The proposed density aligns with the goals outlined in the planning context of allowing more density for mixed-use corridors with transient service. We have a height violation. We have the violation in stories, but we are compliant with the feet. The proposal calls for three stories and two and a half stories is what is compliant. But again, the density aligns with the goals within the planning context as previously stated. We do have a usable open space violation. We are proposing approximately 123 square feet per unit of open space and 1,800 square feet is what is required. We understand the need to provide more open space within projects like this, but the sub-district requirement is very high and also can be addressed during design review for alternative measures of providing more open space. We have a side yard violation. The proposal is compliant on the left-hand side, but is non-conforming on the right with a setback of four feet and five inches and a ten feet is what is required. Also, we are approximately about eight feet, five inches away from the existing dwelling on the right-hand side. Parking insufficient, code requires two spaces per unit and this proposal calls for one space per unit, which is aligned with the initiative of reducing dependency on private vehicles. We also have a violation for conformity of existing building alignment. Again, we do acknowledge this violation and it also can be addressed during BPDA design review if approved. I have read the BPDA recommendation and there are some inconsistencies in what was recommended as compared to some of the initiatives that have been driven by our mayor, such as recently approved projects in this corridor. One being most recent project that was approved was at nine, what, 1050 High Park Avenue on approximately an 8,000 square foot lot. First, the use, as previously discussed, the mayor's initiative increasing the housing stock is to provide more dense projects within major thoroughfares on transient-oriented routes, just like this. We are on High Park Avenue. In fact, there have been many other recently approved dense projects on this corridor, it's just the one I previously mentioned. Next, the mayor's initiative on parking is to reduce the dependency on private vehicles, but appears that the BPDA suggestion is completely opposite, requesting the proposal to comply or accommodate the parking ratio of twenty-five, twenty-four parking spaces. Lastly, I understand the need for conformity with existing building alignments and side yard setbacks, but those violations could be addressed during design review as well as finding other alternatives to increasing open space. So at this point in time, well, one thing I also want to mention is some more inconsistencies that were discussed within the BPDA recommendation as they stated, we had a height violation of feet, which was, which is inaccurate. We're at thirty-one feet. And also, they discussed the incorrect FAI. So at this point, Madam Chair, I'm going to pass it over to the board for any questions or comments.
Thank you, that's helpful. Questions from the board?
I have a question, Madam Chair. I think you may know where I'm headed. I think.
Probably, go ahead.
Lots of parking in the rear yard. Was, is there a reason why you couldn't accommodate it within the footprint of the building? It just seems like an interesting choice to dedicate that basement plan to storage and rather than parking and preserve more previous area.
No, that was just, it was, it was a design perspective from, from the actual owner of the property as well as the architect and considering a lot of the other projects that were approved, they figured that the, the parking in the rear would be better allocated and fit for a building and keeping it at a lower height and compliant height is, is concerns to the feet requirement.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Madam Chair, members of the board, calling to the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time the mayor is asking to defer to the judgment of this board. ONS hosted an abutters meeting in the New Year that was lightly attended. The applicant, I understand, then went on to meet with the High Park Central River Association in a positive meeting and then they were also in contact with the High Park Neighborhood Association, who I believe will have Representative Vaughn to comment on this proposal. With that info, we will defer to the board at this time, thank you.
Thank you.
Joe, Gabriel, other words?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Joe McGeekren, City Councilor, Eric Murphy's office. Would like to go on record in support of this applicant today, thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is Gabriel Cruz from Councilor Pettis' office. The council would like to go on record that he is in support of this project. The council believes that Mr. Akiki is a strong and active member of the community, thank you.
Okay, and Madam Chair, we have no additional raised hands.
Okay, any other questions? Well, is that person-
Yeah, at least someone just jumped with a raised hand, do you want me to take it? It just-
Uh, sure, that's fine.
Yep, um, and when she's looking to get testimony here?
Yeah, sorry about that with my late raised hand. Um, I just had a quick question, the gentleman who represents Mr. Akiki spoke about alternative plans for maybe increasing open space. I'm not sure if I heard that correctly.
Um, okay. Does the applicant want to comment?
Yeah, so that's just another measure where this is such a significant sub-district with the requirements 1,800 square feet, that is providing 123 square feet. There are other areas that can be discussed during Boston Planning and Development Agency review if this project is subject to approval, where they can look at the product itself and potentially provide more open space requirement to it.
There is one additional raised hand, Madam Chair, do you want me to take it or no?
That's fine, last for his hand.
Okay, thank you. Laurie, go ahead. Can you give us your name and address, and let us know if you're in support or opposition? Hello, I have something to request to unmute you, oh, go ahead, yeah, okay, hang on.
Go ahead.
Yes, my name is Laurie Toshon Pierre. I live on 10 Falling Eye, Hyde Park Avenue here. When I received the letter, I thought that was the best thing, because I have so many people was looking for an apartment in Hyde Park, they could not find apartment. I think if Mr. Akiki built it well, that would be the best thing to do for people, that would help people. I know, because I've been living there for more than 30 years. That's the best thing, he knows what people need. Sometime when we have problem, we go to him, he help us to find an apartment, he helped us. Please let him do it, that would be the best thing to do, thank you.
Thank you, Madam.
And I'll take the raised hand, thank you.
Okay, with that, um, any other questions from the board? May I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve this with BPDA Design Review. I think Hyde Park Ave is the main thoroughway through the city. And I think that the units are helpful to the housing crisis.
Thank you, is there a second?
I will second, but can we add sort of a specific proviso to focus on reducing impervious surface?
Yeah, I'm okay with, I just, I'd hate to see them lose parking spots with the T so unpredictable in that area. So, you know, I'm certain-
So I think it's a design review with attention to impervious, it's not a requirement, or impervious, sorry, surfaces.
Works for me.
Okay, and were you a second, Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Then again.
Okay, Mr. Stenbridge?
Yeah.
Mr. Langham?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Great, thank you. Next, we have case BOA 1572704, with the address of 40 Rexford Street. It's the applicant and or their representative, the president, would they please explain the case to the board?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes. Hello? Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, great. Uh, good morning, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Uh, my name is Shirley Lemon, and I presently own and live at 40 Rexford Street, which has been owned by my parents since the 1970s. I grew up in the house with my parents, living on the second floor. They've always rented the first and the third floors. Both apartments have separate utilities, including, uh, built-in mailboxes. They've always paid taxes on a three-family, and the house is insured as a three-family under the assumption that the property was a three-family. So now that I'm currently renovating the third floor and obtaining permits, I was made aware by 1010 Mass App that the property is zoned as a two-family. So I'm seeking the board's approval for rezoning to make the necessary changes. Thank you for listening, thank you.
Questions from the board?
If, so just to confirm, just because I don't have the tax record in front of me, it's being taxed right now as a three-family?
I believe so, yes. Okay, uh, any other questions from the board?
Any changes to the footprint of the building?
No, there's no exterior change, structural changes, it's all interior. Uh, it's a 1,200-foot square foot apartment, full kitchen, full bath, changing to a two-bedroom apartment. It has rear, um, access, front access, and, um-
Yeah, so accessibility from the third floor, are there two means of egress?
Yes, there is, yes, there is, from the top to the bottom. Okay. May I have public testimony?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, the Mayor's Office has deferred to the judgment of this board. Uh, we held an abutters meeting on March 19th. Uh, we don't have any letters in support or opposition on file. Uh, we understand that they were in contact with the Greater Madison Pen Neighborhood Council. Um, with that, we'll defer to the board at this time, thank you.
Okay, any other raised hands?
We have no additional raised hand at this time.
Here, may I have a motion?
Motion, upper. Second.
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries, the month and-
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Next, we have case BOA 1450603, with the address of 556 Cambridge Street. It's the applicant and or their representative, the president, would they explain to the board?
Are you on for this case, George, are you here? Or you represent them? Oh, my God, please, probably the cameras, I might-
Hello, I'm sorry.
Oh.
Yes.
Yep.
Sorry about that. Good, good morning, thank you, Mr. Stenbridge, sorry about that. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is George Burness, I'm an attorney with a business address of 350 West Broadway in South Boston. I represent City Realty, and I'm joined today by Jay Lewis Simmons from City Realty. Project architects are Calza Design and Daniel Martinez from Calza is also with us today. This is an application to construct a new four-story, 14-unit residential condominium building at 556 Cambridge Street in Alston, which is located within an LC.5 local convenience sub-district. Excuse me. This is currently a two-story, uh, commercial office building. While zoned local convenience, the area is characterized by a mix of uses and is actually primarily residential in character with the exception of the corners of this particular intersection with Gordon Street. Proposed here are six studio units, seven one-bedroom units, and one two-bedroom unit. My client has committed to 21% affordability with units two and five to be offered for sale at 80% AMI, and unit eight to be offered for sale at 100% AMI. All three proposed IDP units are one-bedroom units. With respect to zoning, the multifamily use is conditional, requiring a conditional use permit. We assert that the use is appropriate for the site and will not adversely affect the neighborhood, nor will it create a nuisance, that the building will be adequately maintained with appropriate residential facilities, and that owing especially to the fact that no off-street parking is proposed, there will be no hazard posed to pedestrians or vehicles. As I say, the building will not have accessory off-street parking. The philosophy here is to provide new homeownership opportunities for city residents who choose not to own a motor vehicle, and by not building in-structured parking, also being able to exceed IDP requirements by providing, as I said, over 21% affordability, while in excess of 13% required by the IDP policy. Also, as we'll see during the architectural presentation, conversion of the building from its existing office uses, also with no parking, to residential use will reduce the number of daily vehicle trips and alleviate traffic-related issues in the neighborhood. As the BPDA recommendation in memorandum note, the site is proximate to the MBTA's number 57 and number 501 bus routes, and is an approximate five-minute walk to the Harvard Avenue stop on the Green Line. Finally, it would be challenging, if not impossible, to introduce parking to this site owing to the fact of its location on a corner of a signalized intersection. There's a cited violation for street wall continuity in this LC zone as the code favors uniformed street walls in neighborhood business sub-districts. As we'll see in the architectural presentation, the new building's footprint will be substantially similar to what is existing. Additionally, and as previously mentioned, while zoned LC, this area is predominantly residential in character, and at this location, reasonable residential setbacks are more appropriate, which would lead us to the next cited violations owing to setback non-conformances with minimum side yard setback of 10 feet and a rear yard required setback of 20 feet reduced owing to the fact that this is a shallow lot. The provided left-side setback is actually identical to existing conditions of 2.17 feet, and the right side of this lot is a street line along Gordon Street. The rear setback is actually 10 feet rather than 20 feet under the table owing to the shallow lot exception under section 51-57.11. The proposed setback here at the rear is 6 and 1/2 feet, which actually exceeds by nearly a foot the setback of the existing building. And to the immediate rear, this site is an abutting residential driveway. There are dimensional violations owing to excessive floor-area ratio, 2.5 is actually the maximum here, and 2.92 is being proposed. Article 51 also has a rather unusual 15-foot thickness in this LC local convenience zoning sub-district. The proposed here, uh, height here is four stories and 40 feet, and I would propose that the, uh, both the FAI unit proposed height are contextually appropriate to the site and consistent with residential density and heights in the neighborhood, as opposed to the severely constricting LC dimensional regulations. Finally, 700 square feet of open space per dwelling unit is required in code, whereas the proposed building relies primarily on public open space, including, uh, for example, uh, proximity wringer playground, which is noted in the BPDA recommendation, is a six-minute walk from the site. I'd like to turn it over to Daniel Martinez for a very brief walkthrough of plans, and then we'll take any questions and comments from board members, Daniel?
Yes, uh, good morning, everyone, thank you for having us. Uh, so briefly, if we can go to the rendering, um, on the last few pages. Okay, yes, these will work for the actual rendering. So basically, I'd just like to talk briefly about the macing, uh, how we, uh, basically, we have three main elements. Uh, we wanted to engage the corners, so we used the bay there. Uh, this bay is anchored by two other elements, which are fronting the street. Uh, we brought the bay all the way down to ground the building and create that street that's that continuity. You know, basically, we reserved the first floor to provide more privacy for the residents. Uh, you know, originally, we had contemporary design, but after receiving feedback from the ACA Board and the neighborhood meeting, uh, we designed the building to embody a more traditional look. Uh, we incorporated manta roof, curved domers, uh, we engaged the facade with more trim work, ilasters and ornamentation. Uh, the materials that we're proposing for the facade are fiber cement panels, uh, good quality like cement that has the steam into it. Uh, this allows us to enhance the natural look and provide, uh, materials, more traditional earth-cladding materials. Uh, we're also, uh, proposing to cut the material in a running bond pattern, uh, to again provide texture and, uh, more traditional look. And if we can walk through the plans, I can briefly go over those. Uh, could we start the first floor plan? A little bit down. One more, thank you. Uh, so this is the existing building. Uh, as you can see, we would provide some improvements, if we can go to the first floor plan on the next page, please. Uh, and right here, we provided some, uh, improvement from the side, we provided a vest deal, a package room. Uh, the first, uh, floor has two units, uh, one with two bedrooms and one with one bedroom. We're enclosing the trash room to, uh, enhance the curb appeal, and we're also providing a bike room on the first floor that can be easily accessed from the accessible ramp on the rear. Uh, there's also additional bike room storage in the basement. Uh, we have all of our common utilities in the basement and storage rooms for all the units. Uh, if we go to the upper floors, uh, the upper, the upper floors are basically identical plans from the second floor to the fourth floor, with the fourth floor being a little bit smaller to account for the geometry of the manta roof. Uh, these are all studios and one bedrooms. Uh, and again, it's four, four units per floor, uh, from the second to fourth floor. And that's, uh, pretty much, you know, a brief overview of the project. I can go deeply into, uh, other items, if you, uh, guys have any questions or you want to talk about, about it more.
Thank you, sir, questions from the board?
Is there a roof deck on here?
No roof deck, it's just for maintenance, uh, after some week.
Any decks at all?
I'm sorry?
Any decks at all?
We were not able to provide decks because of the small square footage of the building, and we, uh, we didn't want to go below the 500 square feet.
Are these all residential ops, are they public zone rental, or are they homeownership?
Uh, these are all condominium units for sale, Mr. Stenbridge.
Thank you.
Other questions from the board? Hearing that, may we have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, the Mayor's Office has deferred to the judgment of this board. Some background information on the community process. Uh, ONS hosted an abutters meeting on May 9th. There were many tenants who were present, who expressed that they were unaware of the plans and were concerned about the status of their lease being continued. Uh, the applicant went on to present to both the Alston Civic Association and the Brighton-Alston Improvement Association. Uh, the ACA sent a letter this morning, um, their membership was split on the proposal, um, with those in support, um, citing, uh, the opportunity for a homeownership, um, and they really appreciated the redesign of the building after initial feedback. Uh, those who were in opposition expressed concerns regarding, uh, lack of parking, green space, and assimilation into the surrounding neighborhood. Uh, so with that, the ACA decided to defer to the board. Uh, the Brighton-Alston Improvement Association, uh, don't have their overall outcome. Um, but with that, we'll defer to the board at this time. We don't have any letters in support or opposition, thank you. Thank you.
Eva?
Yes, hello, my name is Sarah Webster, I'm a resident. Um, I, I have two points to make. The reality is notorious for, um, obtaining approvals for, for, um, very dense projects, and in many cases, don't build them, they just are looking for, um, buyers to buy approved project, and nothing is happening. I experienced this on my own street, and I just think that it increases the cost of housing because, um, when you have to allow a second set of developers to make profit on the project, you know, it, it is not helping with the cost of housing. The other point I would like to make is that I'm concerned that this design is short second floor, upper floors being anti-lethal, meaning they, uh, either sidewalk or very narrow setback. And this is happening with other buildings in our neighborhood where, um, you know, there are large, uh, bay windows and other elements of the building that are hanging over public sidewalks, and it, it just makes it very pedestrian and friendly and takes away from what the setback should be all about. You know, when we walk on our public sidewalks, we shouldn't have buildings hanging over our heads. our heads, and if you approve this project, I would ask you to please put a proviso that there is no part of the building that would be hanging over the public sidewalk. Thank you.
Minor?
Thank you, Madam Ambassador. Madam Chair, members of the board, this is Minor Perez, representing the carpenters union. We'd like to go on reference for this project.
Thanks, and we have additional requests. Any other questions?
I'm sorry? No, I'm sorry. Oh, Madam Chair, I just wanted to respond, I just want to clarify, there are no portions of the building that would be protruding beyond the lot line, so nothing is overhanging a public sidewalk.
Okay. Decreases the positivity.
Any other questions from the board? Our BBDA recommendation referenced roof decks to help provide some of the open space requirement. Did that change during the process?
No, Ms. Canato, I read that as well in the recommendation, and it surprised me because it's not shown on the plans, and it has never been shown on the plans. I believe that the BBDA reviewer on sheet A-102, fourth floor roof plan, seasoned, saw an area next to the mechanical air handlers and next to the access to that maintenance, I'm sorry, that utilities area, and mistook that area for a roof deck. To have a common roof deck here would, that's a bad area, I'm sorry, that's an elevator override essentially, and again, I think misinterpreted by the BPD.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the board? Hearing none, we'll have a motion.
A motion to approve with BBDA design review and the proviso that they enter into an inclusionary development policy with the Mayor's Office of Housing.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Look at we will.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
For the record, could we be able to just get clarity on that second proviso?
I believe it was to enter into an affordable housing agreement with MOH, Mayor's Office of Housing.
Correct. And is that to memorialize the 21% affordability, or?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
At this time, we'll move on to the rediscussions scheduled for 11:30 a.m. We'll begin with case BOA 1542408 with the address of 27 to 29 Kellworth Street. It's the applicant and or their representative present. They explain the case to the board, please.
Hi, good afternoon, members of the board. My name is Evan Smith. I'm coming before the board for a second time. This was previously before the board in April and was deferred to get notification to a couple of other organizations in the neighborhood. The project is a proposal for nine units, a new construction building on an empty lot at the corner of Dudley Street and Kellworth Street. Next slide. This is a screenshot of the lot as it currently stands. It's an empty lot with a single tree on it. Next slide. I think the previous presentation, sorry, next slide, the previous presentation, I did not do the best job of explaining the context of the site, and so I have amended the slideshow to show exactly what's around the site. This is on the corner of Dudley and Kellworth, and as you come down Dudley Street, there is a repetition of buildings, such as the one in the lower left that shows a corner building, four stories, facade. On the opposite corner, the, on the right side, second image down, where it says four stories, there is a building that is also four stories, brick building, residential. I am seeking to continue that repetition that exists up and down Dudley Street, and this project is very close to Nubian Square, where increased density seems important. On either side of Kellworth and Dudley Street, just past the site, there are three-story brick townhouse-style buildings with multiple units in each one. I am proposing to continue that same pattern and density on site. Next slide. These are sort of buildings I'm referencing that are on either side of the site, the three-story brick townhouses, multiple units in each townhouse. Next slide. Same thing on Dudley Street, more buildings of a similar technology. I'll also note in all of these that they have zero setback from the sidewalk, that is the mode that is in that area. Next slide. We also have larger buildings. Next slide. And this is that opposite corner I mentioned. Next slide. We can skip down three slides. All right, so, up one. So this is a building that I am proposing. It is a three-story brick building with nine units in it. It would have three one-bedroom units, three two-bedroom units, and three three-bedroom units. All buildings, all units would be condominiums and not apartments. There has been a strong push in the neighborhood for many years towards homeownership, and this is in keeping with that. Next slide. This is a view of the building looking down Kellworth Street. Next slide. Next slide. Next slide. This slide here outlines the amount of community engagement we've had. The project started off initially as a mixed-use project with 23 units between two properties. The project ended up being split up because it's a much smaller building with only three stories, the prior one was four stories. Had two butters meetings, three meetings with the Highland Park Neighborhood Coalition, two design reviews with Boston Landmark Commissions and agents ACDE. The only opposition that I seem to be getting on the project currently is related to parking and unit count, and unit count seems to be mainly in reference to parking. There is concern that having more units versus less units in the building will lead to more cars. The street parking is currently not fully utilized, and in keeping with the initiatives to push for lower parking requirements in transit-oriented development, this project is within several hundred feet of the Nubian Square bus station and within a five to 10-minute walk of the Roxbury Bus, Roxbury Bus and Keystone City. Next slide. Changes that I have made, there was originally a roof deck plan in the plan. The new plan does not have roof decks, per community pushback on that, and then, design-wise, there has been a request to break up the facade. Once I get zoning approval, we still have to go through a Highland Park Architectural Conservation District design review, so further detailing will be done, as well as BBDA overlay district design review. Next slide. And then, as mentioned previously, concerns have been around too many units. Again, trying to prioritize tiny units to smaller and at a lower price point, as overall condo prices in the area have been driven up by the large units, we're trying to offer some smaller units at a lower price point. And then, the other concern about being too big, the building conforms to the setbacks on the street already established by the existing buildings, and it conforms to the height that already exists on building, on the street, as a three-story building. Next slide. And then, this is just the original submission. Lastly, the concern that was voiced last time, two churches had voiced concern that they had been notified of the project in Christ Temple Church on Kellworth Street and the Holy Temple Church on Lambert Ave. I met with both groups individually over the past month. The concerns that were voiced, again, were around parking and whether or not, you know, this would cause substantial impact on parking. It is notable that in one case, the church that voiced, one of the churches that voiced the concern, no longer meets in the neighborhood, they actually meet in another neighborhood altogether, and then, the both churches have parking lots for their parishioners for use for Sunday services. So that was the concern voiced at the last meeting. And with that, I know in my spirit, I'd be happy to take any questions that any board members have.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Are there questions from the board? Hearing none, I'll take public testimony.
Madam Chair, members of the board, calling in with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, the Mayor's Office like to defer to the judgment of this board, some background information in the community process, ONS hosted a butters meeting, one of them was on December 19th. Proponent also presented their plans before the Highland Park Neighborhood Coalition on March 12th. The HPNCE voted against the development. There was also some amity of butters during the process who also expressed concerns regarding what they felt was the units being too small, a lack of affordable housing, as well as concerns related to parking. The applicant did go on, as he mentioned, to meet with the Holy Temple and Christ Temple Church this past week to try to address some of those concerns revolving parking. With that, we'll defer to the board at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other electrical offices? Okay, go to Juwan.
Thank you so much. Good morning, well, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Juwan Skeens. I am a candidate running for Massachusetts State Senate for the First Suffolk District, and I am a lifelong resident of Dorchester, but lifelong member of Christ Temple Church of personal experience as well, which is a butter of this property. I don't feel as if we've received proper communication in regards to these current meetings. I receive notifications from our church that they posted a meeting, I believe a flyer on our door. We don't believe that that was adequate outreach. We provided our email at the last meeting that we had with the ZBA to receive outreach for us to share with our members, for us to have a more thorough conversation about what this development can be. At no, at no point am I opposed that there needs to be more housing that comes into the city of Boston. However, it's the type of housing that I'm really concerned about, making sure, you know, I know that the base is 13% for the inclusionary development policy, but I would like to see our developers go above and beyond and reach 60% of inclusion development policy. In addition to that, the units do need to be a little bit bigger. We do have a lot of families who are looking to move into properties, so it's important that we're able to focus on those two and three-bedroom units as well to accommodate the families in this area.
Thank you. Please wrap up.
Yeah, I'll wrap up with this comment, and in regards to parking, the street is very tight as it currently is, so I would say if you can knock down one of those third floors, put in some parking into that facility, it will help to alleviate some of the concerns that neighbors are having, but at this current moment in time, I would have to actually defer of this project just for further community input.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. PR, welcome.
Hi there, how are you this afternoon? I am a member of Christ Temple Church of personal experience, and as Juwan noted, we got a notice kind of staple to our door with a potential Zoom meeting in which the passport itself was like 20 characters long. I did manage to get in, make contact with Evan, and we did arrange to have a separate meeting with him. Our main concerns have to do more with the fact that we already, it is already a heavily populated area of buildings, number one. Number two, as we came to find out, is that the property he wants to build on does not include the lot next to it, which was a basic lot. So there's an adjacent property which is in disrepair and which apparently he has no connection to and does not know what will be done with it, but yet, I have find it hard to believe that he has not been in contact because it's, you know, it's a dilapidated building, and therefore, at some point, they're going to want to do something with that lot which is immediately adjacent to his lot. I just feel like to put something on that property is going to end up being too congested. The market value, though he says he's going to try to do a $400,000 price point, I believe, by the time it finishes, it will be higher. We have no, no, no understanding whether or not these condos that are wrought can be used for other purposes like Airbnb. There appears to be no definite benefit to the community involved. It's a historic area, which in several areas, it's trying to be built up historically. There's a tour group that does tourism in the area, and we would like to see that increase, develop it as more of a historic community area and community, keep it as a community area and not allow this.
Thank you. Please wrap up. Thank you.
Okay, we have no additional requests.
Okay, would the applicant like to respond to that as that was part of the reason for your last referral?
Yes, as the second community member mentioned, I did, in fact, meet with the Christ Temple Church, and as I noted, the concerns were similar to what was voiced there around parking and around density. Again, I am responding to what the market is looking for. The market is not looking for million-dollar large units. The market is looking for smaller units that can be entered into at a much lower price point starter homes, starter condos, and that is what I'm trying to deliver here in this project.
Thank you. Other questions from the board?
Look to ask about whether or not there's any affordable units as part of it. I didn't quite capture that, and also, if you could speak to the open space that you're building out into Kellworth and Dudley, is that, where do you stand in going through approvals for that process?
So I had initial conversations with the PIC in Boston Transportation back in 2021 and 2022 regarding that. I have not followed up with sense because I've had a very, very long community process and was not sure if we would get approval for the project. Our intent is absolutely to build out that parklet. PIC and BTD seem amenable to the idea. We would be willing to put that into, you know, a proviso as part of this, that is our community benefit of building out that green space, because I do think that is a substantial community benefit as a current intersection that's quite dangerous, quite large, has no crosswalks, and it's kind of an asphalt desert that could be substantially improved, so we would like to do that as part of this project.
Thank you. And a question about any affordable units, income-restricted units?
Our original proposal in 2021 for a larger building did have affordable units. At the time, the feedback we got from the community was that they would much rather have a smaller project than affordable units. Unfortunately, it's not financially feasible for us to provide affordable units, and this was submitted prior to the changes.
Nine units, we don't have that.
Yeah, nine units, so, exactly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
May I have a motion? Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Stenbridge, go ahead.
A comment was made that the building adjacent to the lot, which is, yes, the old Mason, Mason Temple, is not part of this project.
That is absolutely correct. It's owned by another owner. I have no control or stake in that project or building.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Any other questions? Okay, may I have a motion?
I'll make a motion for approval with BTD and Boston Landmarks Commission Design Review.
And may I have a second?
I'll second. Janie, did you mean, sorry, did you mean BPDAs?
Yeah, but also that these plans need to be submitted to the Boston Landmarks Commission because it's a historic district.
Yeah, David, this is Jeff Hampton. If it's going to landmarks, we don't get to see it.
Okay, so then landmark. Okay, so my motion would be for approval with plans submitted to Boston Landmarks Commission for design review.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
I'm going to vote with the community and say no.
Okay, Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
The chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you. Have a great day.
Next, we have two companion cases, case BOA 1529408 with the address of 31 Roseville Street. Along with that, we have case BOA 1591700, also with the address of 31 Roseville Street. It's the applicant and/or their representative, the president. The next slide to the board, please.
Eric, send a request on mute. Are you here for this proposal?
Yes, ma'am.
Go ahead, we can hear you.
Do you hear me?
Yes, sir. Please state your name and address for the record and proceed.
My name is the FBO with the Zambal Architects, the architects and the contractor for 31 Roseville Street, representing Marion and Javante Center. And we're proposing a changing from a two family to a three family. And it's currently zoned for three family, and the apartment could advantage of that. Certainly, it's not forming. And we're seeking relief for, I believe, the height, you know, it's estimated that we're probably over, but we're not changing the height to make it worse, we're not changing the footprint either. And I'm proposing four parking starts, so one required per unit. And and just making improvements to our own property. Right now, it is it's the same water damage from 20, what do we, 2023, 2022, also went to 2022. And there's a storm or it wants to unoccupy and make improvements to this property.
Okay, so you're not adding height, you're adding dormers, correct?
Yeah.
And you're not expanding the footprint?
Exactly.
Okay. Questions from the board? Hearing that, may I have public testimony?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, the Mayor's Office elected to defer to the judgment of this board. We had a butters meeting back in early January where residents had questions regarding the construction process as well as with parking. During the last referral, we checked in with the applicant, requested that they meet with the local civic association, which is WOW. But that information will defer to the board at this time. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Iommi Elmuyewo with the Office of City Councilor, Brandon Orwell. In regards to this project, they met with WOW's coalition and received support. There was a question regarding the parking, but besides that, no other letters of opposition, and with that, the council would like to give his support.
I think we have no additional raise hands.
Any other questions from the board? Hearing that, may I have a motion?
I'm motion to approve with BPDAs designer review.
Is there a second?
Second.
Next.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you, everyone. Great talk.
Next, we have case BOA 1567789 with the address of 1-7 Selkirk Road. It's the applicant and/or his or their representative, the president. The next slide to the board, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Stembridge. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Jeff Drago with Drago &amp; Toscano with the business address of 11 Beacon Street. Here on behalf of my client, if we could stay on the next slide, Madam Ambassador, which shows the site picture. Thank you. Here on behalf of my client, Alan Burfield, and I also have Dennis Greenwood from Sousa Architects that's on the call as well to answer any architectural questions. The proposal is to erect four new three-story townhouses on this empty parcel, taxable city parcel, with four exterior parking spaces. This particular sub-district is a 3F 6,000. We have one of the largest empty parcels in the area at 9,135 square feet. You can see the existing conditions of the lot as it stands right now. We designed the project to actually keep almost all of the trees on the parcel. And that is part of the Aberdeen criteria as well, to keep as many of street trees as well as lot trees on the property as possible. The gross square footage is 11,294 square feet, and this parcel is located on the corner of Killsite and Selkirk Road. If we go to the next slide. And again, this is actually a better site picture. You can see the topography of the lot. It's a pretty steep incline as you go up Selkirk. And we'll show you when we get into the renderings where we carved out an area for the four parking spaces, which also allows us to have a good amount of green space in the northern quadrant as you go up Selkirk. On the right, I just want to point out the building that's existing is where my client lives. That's his home at 131 Killsite. We did have, as part of this project, as we worked with the community, we actually made that building zoning compliant. We were proposing some condos at the Killsite. That was withdrawn. It is just now strictly the Selkirk for townhouses. As we went through, if we go to the next slide, please, Madam Ambassador. And this is a front rendering of the townhouses that are proposed. As we went through the process, we had extensive community meetings, met with the BAIA to get their support. But also, this does fall within the Aberdeen Architectural District. So we met with the commission on multiple occasions to come up with the design that you see here today with the gable roofs and the exterior design to meet many of their specifications and criteria. If we can go to the next slide, please, Madam Ambassador. And now you just see where the layout of the townhouses in relation to the four parking spaces. So we actually ran the parking scheme by Bob D'Amico and BTD for their sign-off prior to coming to the board. And you can see where those spaces are laid out. And really, that is the most appropriate location, just given the incline and given the entrance point, and the northern corridor wouldn't work. So that was the best spot for the parking that we could find and maintaining all of the street trees and, sorry, trees on the lot as well as much as possible. If we go to the next slide, please. You can go to the next slide. Sorry about that. And this just shows the rear of the building. So you can see off to the right, the large amount of green space for the townhouses. These would all be for sale townhouses. And then in the back, we created individual patio space for each unit to have for some additional outdoor area. We have small Juliet balconies, obviously, given the gable roof look. We didn't want to add or try to put in, there was nowhere to put them, for roof deck space. Just to go over the floor plans briefly, these are all identical in units. These are all 2,833 square feet, and three of them are 2,814 square feet. These are family-sized units, something that we were encouraged to do. First floor, all have living, kitchen, dining. And then second floor has a bedroom and bath. And then the third floor would have two additional bedrooms and two additional baths. These would be three-bedroom units, all of them equally across. Just to go over briefly the violations that were mentioned, we tried to keep the zoning variances at a minimum. And where we are seeking variances is FAR. We're at 1.2, and what would be required is 0.8. We meet everything in height and stories. We actually reduced the height of the building to do that. Open space, we're close, 3,200 would be required. We're at 2,513. Rear yard, and just to note, this is a good section. So just because of the shape of the lot, our side yard has all of the green space. Our rear yard is roughly almost five feet from the back property line. That's against the building that my client owns at 131 Killsite. And then for parking, as I had mentioned, we did want to have where these are townhouses. We are very close to the green line within walking distance, but we did want to have four parking spaces, all that would go directly, one for each unit. And I know in the BPDAs recommendation, which we read through, they recommended approval. But, you know, parking, even though we do have some, we tried to keep it at a minimum as well. And so we were, as I had mentioned, we were extensively on design with the Aberdeen Commission as well as the BAIA in making modifications to the plan. And I can pause there and answer any questions, myself or Dennis, the board mayor.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
Yeah, I have one small, I have one small question.
Yes, sir.
How many affordable units do we have there?
These are not, given the amount, there's only four. We weren't able to make the numbers work with affordability.
Okay.
May I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, the Mayor's Office elected to defer to the judgment of this board. Some back information in the community process. On February 29th, our office held the most recent of butters meeting for this proposal, which is both 1-7 Selkirk and 131 Killsite. Butters had concerns about parking density and the architectural character relative to the neighborhood. Those attendees that were in support noted the need for housing, and I liked that the proposal involved preserving trees. The applicant also presented to the Brighton Austin Improvement Association, which offered their support for the proposal. We received 15 letters in opposition, which I believe we've sent over to the board. With that, I'll defer to the board at this time. Thank you.
Okay, we have a couple of raise hands. Are there any other raise hands?
Sorry, just.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Sorry, this is Marla Craven, Councilor of Raines Office. The council, this project is a bit different from ones that we've seen in the past in that it's adjacent to a public street. But this street has no public sidewalks. So the council is just like to ask if the ZBA would consider revision that would require the project undergo pick review because we're unsure what the long-term plans are. And she's concerned for the sidewalks in the area. She's concerned about industry and accessibility. Thank you.
Thanks. Any other local official offices before we move to public? Hearing that, I go to Eva.
Yes, hello. My name is Sarah Webster. I would like to speak on behalf of Aberdeen Brighton Improvement Association, which has been in existence for over 10 years. And I would like to object to the fact that Attorney Drago made an effort to meet with us, nor has he wanted to, that butters had sent to him. We did have butters meetings because they are required, but they didn't lead to establishment of any real contact with the butters, who have very serious concerns. We realize that they can be harsh, but we developed, but everyone who has spoken in the neighborhood about it believes that the project is just too dense. We would like to see three townhouses, not four. And if the project were to be approved as it is, it would be violating Article 51, which prohibits parking in the front yard. There is, I'm going to try to read it quickly, so it's on my phone. My hands are shaking. I'm a little bit nervous about this whole thing. I cannot find it right now, but please trust me. Article 51 states very clearly that there should be no parking in the area that are required as landscape under Article 51. Also, the projects would have 12 bedrooms, and it would be most likely marketed to, you know, roommates and so on. It could have as many as 24 residents living, and with four parking spaces in the area, there are no stop and no walk at any time. This is what the signs say, that there is no parking because it would make it possible for the streets to be used. These are just like country roads.
Okay, ma'am, please wrap up. Okay, thank you. Any other raise hands?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Anna Valavant, who are Brighton Austin Improvement Association. We'd like to go in record and support. This is a great opportunity to offer homeownership to many of the people who buy in that area, are long-term residents. That is a paper street, so there are no sidewalks. It is a small street. It's an access road, so I don't see how a sidewalk would be built there, but it works for the houses that live there. It is a great opportunity to put homeownership there. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I have a couple of raise hands, yeah. Go ahead, just briefly appear in support of opposition so that we can try to get to as many people as possible. Good morning.
Oh, hello. Thank you, Chair, and the board. We're living directly across 332 Killsite, close to four decades, and near Cross Street. And I'm quite happy to have supported the movement to make this an architectural conservation area. The, it is much too dense, much too out of character with the rest of the neighborhood. It's not respecting the intentions of this neighborhood. The neighborhood is featured, the municipal code is being as being a highly naturalistic and preserve the topography of the land with the effort made to just maximize the footprint and the density and the profitability of this project. And we tried very hard to get this.
Thank you. Please wrap up. I think we have others who raised.
Gabriella?
Hi there. Gabriella Good, 123 Killsite Road. I live down the street. I'll keep this brief because I know there are lots of commenters, but I'm in support of this project. I appreciate that the off-street parking will not impact trying to find a space in the neighborhood when you're parking on the street. I appreciate the attention to keeping trees, the side yard green space. I don't think it will add in terms of the look of the neighborhood. I don't think it will make it a terribly denser look. And I appreciate that, I think, so far, the number of units has already been reduced. So in general, in support of, you know, adding inventory to the community, especially for families. Thanks.
Thank you. Keep going.
Two more?
Two more, okay. Barry and then Phil. Barry sent a request on mute.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Barry Pell, 33 Southern Road. I previously submitted a letter opposing the size of the project, not the project itself. The building as proposed appears quite massive and out of character. The building, as proposed, appears quite massive and out of character to the neighborhood. There is loss of open space in an already very dense area. Parking is very limited and yet, as noted by others, for three-bedroom units, there will likely be a much higher auto ownership, vehicle ownership than is capable of being handled off-street. There is no, because of the narrowness of the streets there, there is no on-street parking available. And parking in this neighborhood is already very, very restrictive. Finally, I'd say as a retired traffic engineer, the narrowness of the streets makes this quite difficult and somewhat dangerous for access by emergency vehicles. And there is no room for delivery vehicles. Deliveries are obviously much more prevalent now. Thank you very much for the opportunity to provide this comment.
Thank you.
Phyllis?
Hi, I'm Leslie Christos, Thor's husband. And I live at 11 Wilson Park, which is two streets over. My family's had the house here for over 80 years. I like to go on record as against this project. I'm third generation. As was mentioned, the project is too big for the area. It's, the street there, well, there is no street. I walk my dog there and, and, you know, I'm gonna get, you know, get hit by a car. It's just too thick and it does not accommodate the housing in the area. So I would like to go on file as being opposed to this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Hold on the last, oh, there's still some raised hands, but I don't know if you want me to keep going?
Um, why don't you take one more?
Okay, Rosie.
If anyone's adding anything new, please be brief.
Hello? Hi, we can hear you, go ahead. Can you give your name and address and quickly tell us that you're in support of opposition?
I'm on, my name is Rosie. I'm on 5 Spencer Street, which I think is gonna be the house that's gonna be built on 94, right behind my home, 94, which I'm okay with it. But I have an issue with the tree that's on the city's property that I've been going back and forth with, is 80% of the cities. And they can't build on that property without reducing that tree or cutting it down somewhat because it's also affecting my home as well. And I also agree with the other person, like, I don't, I want people to have housing, but having two projects going at the same time between Harvard and 5 Spencer Street?
One project, yes, ma'am. I think you're on, I think you're on a different project, ma'am. This is 1-7 Selkirk Road. Thank you. Well, Attorney Drago, would you like to address some of those concerns about the sidewalk and access, et cetera, inside?
Sure. So first, Madam Chair, I just want to point out that all of the immediate buildings around us, besides my client's, where he lives, are three-family or greater in that area. And they're both a mix of rental mostly and condos. And so we wanted to come up with something that was a little bit different with the townhouse look. Two, it was mentioned that we're in violation of the design and the architectural commission. So just to point out, we've met multiple times with the Aberdeen and did not move forward without their blessing on the exterior design. We actually made modifications, including the gables on the roof, based on their recommendations and criteria. Two, for green space, we actually have 2,513 square feet of green space, all of which is in the upper north area and in the back of each unit. The parking was designed where it is for that reason, just because that would ensure that all of that green space in the back and in the top, as you go up Selkirk, would remain as well as keeping 90% of the trees on the property, which was difficult because we had to really work this around all those trees, but we wanted. And that was something that the community had asked for. Two, it was mentioned by one of the neighbors that we refused to meet with a group. We did not refuse to meet with anyone. We had multiple Butters meetings. We went to the BAIA three times. I asked about the group to the mayor's office if that actually was a group that we were supposed to go for, because as you know, all these civic associations have boundaries and have to be acknowledged. They were not. So they were not acknowledged by mayor's office and the city. So therefore, we said we would just keep having a Butters meetings with the neighbors and the group, the BAIA that does have jurisdiction in that area. So just want to be clear on that. And then I know it was also mentioned about parking. We tried to put in enough parking, but also, you know, one per unit. And I know if we had more than that, that it would have been a concern with VPDA and it would have also ate up additional green space. We tried to, I know it was mentioned that the buildings were massive. Again, this is a three-family district. This is the largest lot in that area. It's a corner lot. And we kept the height of the buildings at 35 feet and three stories, which is actually allowed by the code. We are slightly over on FAR. We really tried to design this to meet as many of the dimensional regulations which we have as possible.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Drago. Any additional questions or comments from the board? Okay, hearing none. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion with Boston Landmarks Review.
A motion of approval?
Sorry, motion of approval with Boston Landmarks Review.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stunbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Langham, thank you. Mr. Aiken?
Yes, I think the proponent has done a good job of figuring out how to work with the community and with the creation of the four units and the layout of the, of the property. So yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Ms. Wu Will?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Next, we'll move into the hearing schedule for 1:00 P.M.
Sorry, looks like we need a five-minute break?
Five minutes.
Okay.
Yep, see you guys then.
Let's take a roll call, Mr. Stunbridge.
Present.
Mr. Langham.
Present.
Mr. Aiken.
Present.
Mr. Collins.
Present.
Ms. Panado.
Present.
Ms. Weewell.
Present.
Floor is yours, Mr. Stunbridge.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, let's begin the hearing schedule for 1:00 P.M. We'll ask if there are any requests for withdrawal or deferrals from this timeframe. Hearing none, move on to the first case. And Madam Chair, I need to announce that I will be recusing myself from this case. Um, I will read it into the record. Um, but I do, um, provide oversight on this project in another capacity, so.
Thank you.
So I will recuse myself from both. Uh, case B O A one five eight seven nine zero five with the address of seventy-five to eighty-one Dudley Street. If the applicant and/or their representative present, will they explain the case to the board, please?
Yes, good afternoon. My name is Stephanie Johnson and I am an attorney with Klein Hornig L.O.P. We are located at one oh one Arch Street, Suite eleven oh one in Boston, Massachusetts. I'm here today to represent the developer Madison Park Development Corporation. Um, in addition, we also have Elise Zilius available as a panelist as well. And she is one of the architects with Studio Lou's Architects. So the seventy-five eighty-one Dudley Street project, um, is an affordable home ownership project. And we've been in front of the board, um, a few times for this project. Back in, um, on February fourth, twenty twenty, the board actually granted multiple variances for the project. And those variances were also, um, extended at your meeting on March twelfth, twenty twenty-four. So the pre-granted variances were extended until March twelfth, twenty twenty-five. Um, since initial zoning approval on February fourth, twenty twenty, the project has been redesigned to incorporate feedback from community feedback and feedback from the B.P.D.A., um, and M. So with that redesign, the project has, um, been reduced from twenty units to fifteen units.
Excuse me, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Um, can you hold for one second? Our screen is blank.
I'm sorry? Your s- oh, your screen is not moving? Okay.
Yeah. Okay, perfect.
All right.
For what it's worth, I, this is Antia with Madison Park Development Corporation. The screen that we see, I think, does allow Stephanie to speak to and continue the presentation.
Oh, it's moving, so good, good stuff.
Okay.
Please proceed.
So just going back to the redesign, so again, since that, um, the variances were approved on February fourth, twenty twenty, the project has been redesigned.
Madam Chair, I'm still not able to see anything. Hold on for one second, please. Okay.
Do we need a break for this or are you able to resolve it?
Madam Chair, can you hear me?
Yes.
Can we take like a five-minute break, please?
Yes, I think that would be great.
Recording stopped.
Thank you. Sorry about that.
Page nine hundred.
Jessica, you off set?
Yes.
Okay.
Madam Chair, are you ready?
Thank you. Do you need me to do roll call again?
Um, let's do a roll call, Madam Chair, just to make sure everyone's on.
Okay, Mr. Stunbridge.
Present.
Mr. Langham.
Present.
Mr. Aiken.
Present.
Mr. Collins.
Present.
Ms. Panado.
Present.
Ms. Weewell.
Present.
Floor is yours. Oh, I'm sorry. Yep, back to, um, seventy-five to eighty-one Dudley Street.
Thank you. And again, good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Stephanie Johnson and I am an attorney with Klein Hornig L.O.P. Um, our office is located at one oh one Arch Street, Suite eleven oh one in Boston, Massachusetts. And I'm here today to represent the developer Madison Park Development Corporation on behalf of the seventy-five to eighty-one Dudley Street project. Um, in addition, we also have Elise Zilius, um, representing the project as well. And she is with Studio Lou's Architects. So this project has been in front of the board a few times. We actually first presented in front of the board on February fourth, twenty twenty, where the Z.B.A. granted multiple variances for the project. Furthermore, on March twelfth, twenty twenty-four, the Z.B.A. voted to extend the previously approved variances until March twelfth, twenty twenty-five. However, since the initial zoning approval on February fourth, twenty twenty, the project has been redesigned from twenty units of affordable, um, homeownership units to fifteen units, um, and of affordable homeownership units. And these changes were made to incorporate design feedback that we received from the B.T.D.A. and M.O.H. And also for the need to preserve about six, six existing trees that are located on the site. So with this redesign, it resulted in a reduction in density and a slight relocation of the proposed building on the lot. After we submitted our updated revised plans to I.S.D. on March twenty-seventh of this year, we were informed by I.S.D. that what was previously, previously described as a rear yard is now considered to be a side yard. The zoning relief is for insufficient side yard setback is now needed. So if you look on the screen, um, that kind of rear line that you see there, so, um, in twenty twenty, we received a variance for, um, a minimum rear yard setback, like for the insufficient minimum rear yard setback. But we've learned now that this is actually considered a side yard, so a new variance is needed. Uh, I think of this as like a technicality, um, but we are here to get that approval. So at the minimum right now for this new kind of side yard, um, the minimum is point two feet, which kind of reflects the building overhang. But at the maximum, um, it's twenty-one feet and eleven inches. So with this redesign too, we were able to incorporate a courtyard on an additional green space that we didn't have in the initial design. So, um, that's all that I have, so I guess I'll open the floor for any questions from the board.
Sorry, and this is Antia with Madison Park. I'll just chime in to say this is a proposed foundation on this particular slide, so you're not seeing the twenty-one foot, um, area that Stephanie described. That's actually in the building floor plan if this were a first floor, um, image.
Got it, thank you. Are there questions from the board? Okay, hearing none. May I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, the Mayor's Office like to defer to the judgment of this board. Um, the project went through, uh, the, uh, Mayor's Office of Housing, uh, Community Process. Uh, and afterwards, they're with the Highland Park, uh, Neighborhood Association and the P.R.C. Committee, uh, which voted to support the project. Uh, with that information, we'd like to defer to the board at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, if you may, please come in here for a second.
Ebony Durova? Ebony, you want to give testimony? Or Joe Backer?
Sure, thanks. I'm Joe Backer. I'm a senior development officer with the Mayor's Office of Housing. I am speaking in support of the project. M.O.H. has been, uh, working with Madison Park and its team since twenty twenty on this project and stands in full support. We are providing, uh, subsidy funds to the affordable housing that will be created at the site. And we are also managing the disposition of the city-owned land. So we do support this project fully and I can answer any questions about the city's involvement. Thanks.
Minor?
Thank you, Madam Ambassador. Madam Chair, members of the board, this is Minor Flores representing the Carpinter Union. Would like to go and record on support of this project.
I have no additional raised hands.
Okay.
Um, I believe Ebony from the B.P.D.A. was trying to speak.
Okay, yeah, I know she was trying. You still, you want to give testimony, Ebony? We don't hear you up here.
I don't think you have time.
Oh, okay, you know what? All right, sorry about that, Ebony, one second. I sent a request out. I thought you was a panelist, still waiting? That's okay. Can you pass on the law?
Yes.
Awesome. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Ebony Durova and I'm the senior project manager and development department at the B.P.D.A. I'd like to quickly detail the article review process for this project. Uh, the B.P.D.A. received a notice of project change on November thirteenth of twenty twenty-three. A public meeting was held in January and additional meeting with the Highland Park Neighborhood Coalition Project Review Committee was held in February. Subsequently, um, it was approved by the B.P.D.A. Board on March fourteenth. And that is all, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
And we have no additional raised hand.
Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stunbridge. Sorry, Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Mr. Aiken.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Ms. Panado.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Chair, both yes, the motion carries. Good luck. I believe we're going to hear the interpretation next.
Schedule for the interpretation is scheduled for one P.M. Yes, Madam Chair. So with that, that will be case B O A one five nine two four three three with the address of fourteen ninety-three fifteen oh one Dorchester Avenue. If the applicant and/or their representative is present, they please explain the case to the board.
Uh, hello, uh, Mr. Secretary, uh, this is Mike Ross, uh, with the law firm of Prince Laval. And hello, Madam Chair, members of the board. Thank you for, uh, hearing, uh, this interpretation, uh, from, uh, on behalf of my client, Brian Chavez. Uh, if you go to the first slide, uh, so Brian Chavez is the owner of a family-run business, uh, a pizza store called Antonio's that's located at fifteen oh eight Dorchester Ave, directly across the street from fourteen eighty-three fifteen oh one Dorchester Ave. And we're here today because, as you can see from this first slide, uh, a building permit was incorrectly issued for a takeout restaurant, which is a conditional use in this location and requires board approval for a property directly across the street from Brian Chavez's business. As you can see from the face of the building permit, the use is unambiguously spelled out, Papa John's Takeout Restaurant. In addition, I'll note that this permit was issued on January twenty-second, but Mr. Chavez only first saw the building permit physically posted on April second, seventy-two days after the permit was issued. And outside the forty-five day appeal period, had he seen the permit previously, he would have appealed it immediately. My next slide, please, Madam Ambassador. As you can see from the zoning overlay and the accompanying use table for this zoning sub-district, takeout is a conditional use as defined by Article sixty-five, Section sixty-five dash fifteen, Table B. It's a conditional use. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. There you go, thank you. So I'm sure some of you have seen, this is what's referred to as a commissioner's bulletin. It's meant to set policy within I.S.D. and provide clarification of existing zoning when needed. This particular commissioner's bulletin, however, does far more than clarify existing zoning. It rewrites it. This bulletin is shown by this red box here, seemingly seeks to remove the requirement of obtaining a conditional use permit for takeout uses. However, the language is very ambiguous and it doesn't comport with the zoning code. The language here says, quote, "Effective immediately, we will only enforce a takeout license by requiring a variance if takeout service comprises more than seventy-five percent, more than seventy-five percent of the restaurant business." Note the word variance and not conditional use permit. Uh, I provided this decision tree showing what this could mean. The top shows that the language could mean anything less than seventy-five percent would be a conditional use permit, anything more than seventy-five would be a variance. However, I.S.D. defined this language to mean that anything less than seventy-five percent is allowed and anything greater than seventy-five percent then and only then would the conditional use permit kick in. The next slide, please. There's only two more slides. Um, the Boston zoning code is extremely specific as to the roles of the various components of the zoning process. The building commissioner must follow the code and provide building code refusals for any, any violation of the zoning code. Any. The Board of Appeal, respect, respect for you, may overrule the building commissioner on any order or decision, that's what you do every day, including the reason why I'm here today, the incorrect issuance of a building permit without zoning relief. And then the zoning commission is responsible for writing and amending the zoning code itself. But here, the, the building commissioner was acting in all three roles, including as the board and that he overruled a standing zoning regulation, and as the commission, and that with a flick of the pen, he invalidated a use regulation that requires a conditional use permit for takeout restaurant. I use the word "he" because this was referring to, um, the, the buddy Christopher regime when this was written over ten years ago. And now on this final slide, Madam Ambassador, um, I wanted to just substantively show how the commissioner's bulletin collides with existing zoning regulations. Um, as you can see, Section sixty-five in the middle, sixty-five fifteen in relevant part says, quote, "No land shall be used in whole or in part unless the use is identified in Table B as allowed or as conditional." And then in addition, the, the, the last, um, point, uh, from Article two is the rounding numbers rule, which essentially requires that seventy-five percent of a use or of a measurement should be rounded to the next highest number. In other words, point seven five should be rounded to one and not to zero. So if you go through the above diagrams, on the left, you would find that a hundred percent takeout restaurant aligns with the use regulations and the rounding rule and the commissioner's bulletin. All agree. And then if you go to seventy-six percent, again, everyone agrees. The regs, the rounding rule, commissioner's bulletin, they align. But at seventy-five, this is where the paths diverge. Here, a takeout restaurant is allowed as of right, under the commissioner's bulletin, but it remains conditional under the use regulation and under the rounding rule. It is also the case for fifty percent, takeout restaurant, sit-down restaurant is the same. Interestingly, and, and kind of in conclusion here, that at twenty-five percent, the rounding rule conflicts with the use regulation. The rounding rule says round down and the use regulation says any use whatsoever. Here is actually a place where the building, where the commissioner should prob- could use a, 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 um, a commissioner's bulletin. It would actually be helpful to explain, what do you do in a situation where it's twenty-five percent, where it's conflicting with Article two, but it's also conflicting with sixty-five? That is actually the perfect use of a building commissioner's bulletin, but not to rewrite the code itself, not to say that seventy-five percent of a use is in fact not that use at all. And that's what happened here. I'll pause there and see if there are any questions.
Thank you. Um, is Mr. Joseph available to help, uh, give your perspective?
Uh, yes, uh, yes, Madam Chair. Uh, good afternoon. Uh, this is Mike Joseph here, and that's a practice we've been, uh, doing since that commissioner's bulletin for the last past ten years. So if there was a restaurant, uh, the takeout is seventy-five percent and the sitting capacity is twenty-five percent or more, even though when the table said conditional, so it become an allowed use. This is not in our practice. That's been going on for the last past ten years. But, uh, but the commissioner's bulletin speaks for itself. That's what it is for us. That's what our planned examiner have been going by for the last past ten years.
So you've been consistently applying this, uh, to all, all applicants, correct?
All applicant applying for a restaurant. If it's seventy-five, twenty-five, which is seventy-five percent takeout, twenty-five percent sitting, and then we apply that commissioner's bulletin to that particular application.
Madam Chair, with respect, I need to correct the record on that statement.
Well, I'd like to see if any other members, board members have any questions.
Sure, taps them.
You can answer them all at once.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, this is Sam, um, with Legal.
Yes, yes.
At some point that you deem appropriate during this interpretation, we would also like, um, Pete, Attorney Warren, the representative for the client, at some point to speak whenever you think is acceptable during this interpretation.
All right, thank you. I was not sure who that was. Okay. Oh, okay. All right. Thank you. I was not sure who that was. Okay. Any questions from the board? Okay, hearing none, I'll hear back from the applicant and then I'll give Attorney Warren a chance to speak.
The only thing I would say with great respect to Deputy Commissioner Joseph is that this has not been applied evenly in all situations. As a matter of fact, the previous occupant of this property was in fact my client, who opened a hamburger restaurant. And the hamburger restaurant called Boston Burgers, Boss Burgers, something along those lines, did not fare well during the COVID crisis and shut down. But he had to go in front of this board, and this was actually not only for a conditional use permit, but there was a proviso in that application that used the language "for this applicant only." And "for this applicant only" would have referred just to this applicant and not to the, this pizza chain restaurant, Papa John's. But in any case, that restaurant closed well outside of the two-year period in which a conditional use permit lapses. So it would start fresh anyway, and someone would have to come back in and get another conditional use permit. So it's not applied evenly across the board. It might have been applied here. It was applied here by the, and it was a conditional bulletin, but just simply because this has been applied for 10 years does not make it right if it's, if it's, it's just never been challenged before. And that's where I come in here.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. Mr. Warren?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Good afternoon. Mr. Ross? I would simply stand behind the ISD's opinion and that of corporate counsel. But I do want to state that finally, Mr. Ross has disclosed essentially the appellant here is a business competitor and the disgruntled former tenant of the property. And as a business competitor, his standing before this board is null and void because his business interests are not interest protected by the code. The second point I would like to make is he is not here appealing the denial of the building inspector to issue a cease and desist order. He is here in response to an opinion, a legal opinion provided to him by corporate counsel. And Section 8 of the, of Chapter 655 does not give this board or given an alleged degree of party the right to seek a review by this board of the building inspector's decision unless they have standing. And with that, I rest.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board?
I have two questions, Madam Chair. One would be, I'd be just like to hear a little bit about the 75% determination and how that's shaped and formed. Of course, looking at plans and show, I think it was maybe about seven seats. So just trying to understand, Mr. Joseph, how that's reached? That's my first question.
Well, you see, there are some seats there. There was no seats there before, and there was not a toilet. And the bathrooms is, there was a toilet accessible for the public. If you have a restaurant, 100% takeout, it's not required for you to provide a toilet, toilet facility, seats. When you see all these things there, so 75%, if we have the ratio, he had to have the ratio 75/25. And then you, the plan examiner makes that decision based on the Commissioner's Bulletin because there are seats and there is also one accessible toilet for the public. And that's what the code requires to know that the building also has a seating capacity.
Do you want to ask your second question?
Thank you. And the second one, I'd just like to hear from Attorney Ross a little bit about the piece about the 45-day appeal period. Just explain, please explain that a little bit more.
Yeah, I received a call, I went back before this call here today. I don't mind disclosing this to everyone, that I received a call on April 2nd from my client, who was at the restaurant every single day. And it was the very first time that he saw the actual permit posted in the window. That if the applicant who sees what's happening across the street from him just by looking out his window, would have seen that permit within the 45-day period, he would have been able to appeal that immediately, right then and there. However, we submit that the building permit was obscured deliberately so that the 45-day period could lapse, thereby creating what my brother attorney was suggesting might be a standing issue. Nonetheless, ISD did provide us with standing and allowed us to come back here on our appeal of their, of the Commissioner's Bulletin requesting a stop work order. Not something that they automatically do every time. They could have refused it and forced me to get some sort of writ of mandateness or go to court. No, they refused me so that I could now come to you. You, the decision-making body, who can say whether or not this is or isn't the right thing to happen. And if you decided one way, it would go back to ISD, they would put a stop work order and the applicant would have to come in front of you. And the applicant very well might get approved by you. We're just asking him to go through the same rules that we went through and that anyone else would go through, instead of hiding behind either obscuring the permit or a really bad, not, not legal Commissioner's Bulletin.
Okay, I'm going to ask Mr. Joseph, I don't know if your hand is newly raised or still raised, but I'm not sure what this obscaring of, you know, the permit, et cetera, is. But can you just further clarify, if you can?
Yes, Madam Chair. I don't really know what that means as well, since first Attorney Warren said that the use was there before, the building was there before, there was not a lot of work to do. The building permit was to establish the use, and I don't know how much work was noted on the building permit for them to do. But if the use was only there and the permit was only to change the use as a restaurant. So the building code does not state that they have to probably put the permit on the window if, if there was no work, if there was no work. But I don't have the permit in front of me, I don't have that in front of me here to see how much work was being conducted on that premise there for them to put that permit on the window. However, if they were doing work on the permit, on the premise, it is required for them to put the permit on the window for the public to see. But I don't know if that was done, if that was not done.
Thank you. Well, maybe the landlord can shed some light into this, Mr. Sheehan. Can you unmute yourself?
Yes, thank you. Mike Sheehan, property manager for the 1501 Dorchester Avenue LLC. Just want to correct one thing. Mr. Ross had said Boston Burger was a business that was there that Mr. Chavez bought the business and assumed the lease under an assignment agreement. So they don't want to leave that he was required and didn't go to the ZVA because it was already an existing use and it's been a restaurant for almost 10 years. And so the commissioners point there are bathrooms there. And in regards to the permit, I did get a call from Papa John's. The person representing them said, I want to put this permit up, but there's all these, what's the deal with all these signs advertising a marijuana company in the window? I said, well, just remove them and put the, put your permit up. And that was shortly after the permit was issued. I did go by there once during that period, and I did myself because I was going to McDonald's to get a coffee because my office is right on the corner. And I did see the permit there. We do have a lease with this company. They have paid rent, and they have made a deposit, and their lease is in good standing. And Mr. Chavez came to us and asked us, he was behind on his rent, and asked us to get out of the lease, which we allowed him to do. We did not force him to pay back rent. We did not force him to pay all of the money due under the lease. The landlords, Greg and Brendan Feeny, the owners, and they were sympathetic to his situation. And then we were just asked to board be sympathetic to our situation here as we have a tenant there that we'd ask you to uphold the decision of ISD. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ross, is that, I mean, sorry, Mr. Joseph, is that a new hand or was that previous?
No, that's probably previous. I'm definitely thinking that.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Is the board ready to make a motion?
Yeah. I'd like to make a motion to uphold ISD's recommendation.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Uh, no, I'm concerned about the fact that it's clearly a takeout business based upon what was written on the permit. Despite the lapse of time, this is a tough one, but I will say no.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
The chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Next, we'll go to is BOA 1102152, with the address of 7583 Hancock Street. This is also an Article 80 case. If the applicant and/or their representative is present, please explain the case to the board.
Yeah, hi, Mr. Secretary. This is Mike Ross again. Just so happens I lined up back to back here. I'm an attorney at the law firm of Prince Lavelle, and I'm joined today by the architect Peter Vanco and the longtime property owner Hoyt Nguyen, who is a resident of Dorchester. This is an existing one-story property with neighborhood businesses on a 15,000-square-foot lot comprised of four parcels, located in a 3F 5,000 subdistrict within the Dorchester Neighborhood Zone district. The project was approved by the BPDA Board on September 14th, 2023, through small project review, after holding two BPDA public meetings and several neighborhood meetings. Over the course of the process, the numbers of units were reduced and the family-sized units were added. The project would add three floors of residential units above a pedestal of the existing business, which is a liquor store and a laundromat that the Nguyen family operates. We can stay on this slide for a second, Madam Ambassador. While keeping them open, these stores open and operational during construction, as well as covering a large open parking lot. And there would be 36 units in all, down from what was originally proposed, ranging from studios to three bedrooms, with six IDP affordable units to make 16.7% affordability. And what you see here on this slide, actually, if you want to go to the next slide, Madam Ambassador, here we go. This is the site plan. This is a good slide just to show you what's happening here. It shows Hancock Street on the right side of the page. And on Hancock, you can see that a reduced curb cut of 10 feet, which reduces a very large curb cut that currently exists there today. And it returns curb space to the, to the street. And it's to access a 15-car parking garage, parking area, along with parking for 40 bicycles and residents, and additional guest bicycle parking for visitors along the rear and the side of the building. And you can see this dashed outline kind of in the center of the property. The building steps back on three of the sides. You can see following that dash line. And it's stepped back generously in areas, providing a setback in the rear of the building, which provides a landscaped garden area, as well as an accessible path to a bicycle shed directly off of Troll Street, which is at the bottom of your screen. And the access to that landscaped and bicycle shed replaces an additional existing curb cut that is currently on Troll Street, and that will again restore curb space to the street, to the sidewalk, and reduce vehicular traffic. This plan doesn't show up, but you'll see now in further, in the presentation that, and reference in the BPDA board memo. This project will add 16 new trees to the area, and it will also be an all-electric building. So I'd like you to have Peter Vanco, the architect, show you the other floors and walk you through those really quickly, and then I'll just come back and mention the zoning relief we're seeking. Peter?
Good afternoon. Thank you, Mike. My name is Peter Vanco with Vanco City Architects, 407 Dudley Street, Boston. This building, as you mentioned there, Mike, has undergone a series of, of a lot of process with the neighborhood, a lot of reworking. And I think really what we've come up with here is phenomenal from the stance of a building that marries the existing building, that one-story commercial building with the vacant lot that is sitting there to this currently, which is in many ways a hole in the urban fabric. And the building that is being proposed stylistically is going to marry those things and at the same time really look like and feel like it's, it's been there. And for me, a large building, we worked hard to minimize the massing work in the vernacular that's there, working with late Victorian elements, a lot of planned undulations, a lot of undulations in the facade that break down the massing and developing into something that we're really excited about. So with that, next slide, please. I won't belabor these too much, but as Mike mentioned, we have four levels. So we are essentially a four-story building. It's going to be mixed use. First level is going to remain commercial with the parking. Also, there's a bit of amenity space in the back. We are maintaining the existing buildings. However, there is a sliver in the middle that's going to become our main residential entrance. So once we get to the massing, the elevations, there is an element of the, kind of the center mass that rises up very, very purposefully. And that's because that becomes the main residential entry. But above that are three levels that are identical when it comes to their layouts. There's a mix of studios, ones, twos, and even a few threes. So the unit mix has a lot of variety, can be good for the market. And as well, we have our 5% Group 2 MAB units, so we're bringing accessible units to the market as well. So a good, good unit mix here, I think we're really happy about as well. Next slide, please. This is included simply to set a large, typical floor level. Again, it's going to be the same, all residential levels being the same, but internalized stair tower and elevator tower, so as, as not to make it feel opposing on one end or the other. We do have an external stair that is there planned right, that does enter from the hallway and exits at grade, but we hide that massing as we, as we get further into that side. You also see in this, there's a lot of planned undulation and bays, and there's rich and the city is being created here. It's going to try to set it apart as a, as a new building. So as you can just see there, there's, there's a lot of ins and outs and very, very positive moves being made. Next slide, please. Mentioned massing-wise, we do have a lot of playing going on in the massing as well. We're, we're doing some things where we separate firstly, the massing into a 60/40 relationship over the existing building. We're popping up with massing that is a little bit higher, whereas the massing that is over the parking area, the vacant lot, currently vacant lot, that goes down a little bit and it also recedes from the street plane. So there's lots of good opportunities for street trees. There are good opportunities here for color changes. And obviously, the massing shifts are very positive to break down the overall size of the building. Next up, or next slide, please. From an elevational standpoint, mentioned we're about four stories. We are housing our elevator and stair tower that needs to get to the roof behind that center mass element that also happens to be the main residential entry. Nonetheless, the corner of Troll Street and Hancock is accentuated to the left of this elevation. And that far-left element there on the corner is typified on many historical buildings. It feels like it's always been there, and it's also chamfered, it's softened, and it acts as an octagonal bay that really feels like something that would have been built 100 years ago in this neighborhood. Next slide, please. This slide just demonstrates how we are building out and over the existing building and the residential entry. As well, you can see some of the massing differential from left to right, that sixty-forty, uh, sixty percent being to the left, that's directly over the existing building, the other forty percent sitting back and being over the parking area. But just that massing differential, um, definitely setting us apart from other modern, modern buildings that you typically see probably in front of you. Next slide, please. As we move around to the sides, we have some, um, blanquer facades. The Troll Street elevation is there on the left-hand side. That is an existing facade, existing on the first floor, that already is articulated with some, um, handsome, uh, wood trims, things of that nature that appear to be quite original. We are most certainly maintaining that, not only at the, uh, architecturally it makes sense, but also at the request of the neighborhood. We are trying to maintain a sense that this building is, is really working with the building above. And there's a bit of interplay here to the right of that image as well. The corner of Troll and Hancock has, um, an existing pediment that we've worked hard to integrate into the new building, and they actually connect. Um, we are maintaining that element, um, being very careful that we are just going to restore it to its former glory and, um, maintaining all of the amazing wood carvings and plaster elements that are on it. Um, the other elevation is on the right-hand side of that slide, is the opposite end, um, what I will call the plan east side of the, and that is going to be largely obscured by the many plantings that have been alluded to. Um, that is the exit door that's coming out of that stair tower from our main, um, hallway. That's what you see at ground level, and everything above that would be residential. So it's still going to be lively with trims. It's going to feel vernaculately correct, but also think of that elevation as having a lot of plantings around it. Um, next slide, please. We end with the rear elevation. This elevation also will have many plantings, but for the architectural sake of the drawing, we have removed those, and you're just seeing the building itself. In the lower right-hand side is a bike storage, um, component of the project. This is also going to be where the general amenity areas, we've worked hard to make, um, a landscape plan that is going to be beautiful and great, great amenity for the residents, also great amenity for the neighborhood. Should also be noted that our rear entrance here, um, which you can see there's a grade change, we've made that accessible. So there's actually dual accessibility to this back area, so there's multiple accessible routes onto this back patio. Um, typically, you only would require it around one, one primary accessible route, but at the request of, um, the accessibility board, we actually have added a secondary access voluntarily. Um, and with that, Mike, I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you. Just really quickly, Madam Chair, for the zoning relief, um, we were cited for loading an off-street parking. Uh, one point five parking spaces is required per unit. Um, the use, of course, is a 3F 5,000. This is a multifamily building. We were cited for FAR. I would say that almost every parcel in this block exceeds the current FAR of point five. Um, but our FAR at two point two four also includes the existing retail pedestal that is there today. Um, the building height we were cited for in stories, uh, this is a thirty-five-foot-high, two-and-a-half-foot, uh, area where we are at forty-nine feet and four stories. And then, uh, the front yard was zero, and so we're, we're keeping the zero from existing when a fifteen is required. Um, but it does set back as much as twenty-five feet, uh, as you go towards the right of Hancock Street. Uh, so we do get a, a larger than what's required setback on part of that front yard. And then, um, the side yard, this is a corner lot, um, so we were cited for a side yard, but we are at ten feet on the side yard. So I think that was just a close call that they cited us for. The rear yard requires thirty feet, and we are at twenty feet in that rear yard where that little bike, uh, area and contemplative garden is. Uh, we were cited for a change in a non-conforming use of retail, but we're not increasing retail, we're just altering it, but we were cited for that as well. Um, and these variances relate to the project, the size, the shape of the lot, uh, that combining with this pre-existing structure, uh, is the way we were able to use, uh, and that's why these variances are being sawed. I'll pause there and see if there are any questions. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yeah, and I'm sorry if I missed this. Are these rental or homeownership?
I'm sorry, I didn't say. They are rental, Madam Chair.
Rental. Okay. So were, were they previously homeownership? I'm sure you're aware there's some, uh, letters of opposition, and so I'm just trying to clarify some of the things that were written. One was about homeownership, uh, other things I'm sure you saw on there, but just want to clarify.
Yeah, um, I mean, I think that they're, they're convertible, and I, and I hope I don't have that wrong here. I want to just confirm. Yeah, no, these were, this was approved as rental. Um, I think, I think we might have said that, I mean, we didn't hide the ball, and that's the, the economy is what the economy is, and that there might be an opportunity to convert these. These are great units. If anything's convertible to a condominium, I would say these units would be. Um, but, uh, there was no commitment made to, to do homeownership. Uh, it was a rental project.
Other questions from the board? Is the project manager from BPDA on?
Hi, Matt, I sent a request to unmute you.
Hi, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Scott Greenhall, and I'm a project manager of the BPDA. This project was filed with the BPDA on August eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, and successfully completed the Article eighty review process. This process included BPDA-sponsored public meetings held on September thirteenth and October twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-three. BPDA Board approved the project on December fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Thank you.
And Tony, you look, can you give the last one here? I sent a request to unmute you.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, Tony, I'll leave the, uh, next deed, uh, three to trial. The, uh, Boston Inspection Services, uh, list of zoning violations shows ten violations with quite large list. Article nine, section two, and just not performing use, then Article sixty-five, section eight, and then bar, and Article sixty-five.
Sorry, sir, are you speaking in support or opposition, and can you state your reasons?
Yeah, so it's the opposition because of the, uh, all of the what's, uh, put in the Boston Inspection Services. There is ten, uh, violations from the, uh, Article sixty-five, section eight, use is forbidden. Uh, I'm, uh, the size of this is that we
I don't need you to re-read.
Multiple homes sold to trial. So, the, uh, it's just, uh, it doesn't fit there. The, the neighbors, uh, the, uh, association, neighborhood association, Hancock Street asked developer to reduce the unit count, and developer did the opposite and keep increasing, so this is not what neighborhood wants. And it's in opposition. I think you received a letter of the, uh, Hancock Street Association, where they opposed this multiple times. Uh, developer didn't do it, uh, what neighborhood wanted. There is not enough parking. There is not enough green space. It's just too big. Uh, the nearby homes are two to three families, so, uh, triple-deckers, and this is like, uh, ten times larger. So it's, uh, it just doesn't fit there. Uh, and everybody in neighborhood opposes it, and you received those letters, so it's very clear opposition. Uh, you go.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, the Mayor's Office, I could defer to the judgment of this board, uh, as you heard from the BPDA, uh, project manager. This went through a BPDA-led community process involving two public meetings, September thirteenth and October twenty-third. Uh, during those public meetings, public comments in support, uh, mentioned the need for housing in the area, um, as well as citing, uh, what they felt was an improvement with the new design, uh, being more character, uh, with what's around in the neighborhood, as well as the shrinking of the footprint and reduction in the number of units. Uh, those opposed, um, gave public comments referencing what they felt was not enough parking, uh, for this area, as well as concerns regarding, uh, the amount of density being proposed. Um, the Hancock Civic Association noted that in opposition, uh, citing, um, that they would prefer homeownership, uh, versus, uh, rental. Um, and as well as a comment that was also given that for the liquor store, they, they would hope that it would be no nibs and singles, uh, sold, uh, on the premise as well. Then I see Counselor Fitzgerald saying his raise as well, let them, uh, talk about their first stance of the proposal. Uh, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Uh, Madam Chair, members of the board, Liam from Counselor Fitzgerald's office. Our office would like to go on record in support of the proposal.
Okay, and, uh, Madam Chair, we have no additional reasons.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, here are none. May I have a motion?
Motion no, crew.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Stunbridge?
Yep.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Ms. Well?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we go to case BOA 1565390 with the address of sixteen Rowena Street. If the applicant and/or their representative is present, please explain to the board, please.
Can you raise your hand if you want to propose it?
Uh, argument is present, Cynthia Edwards and the architect Mark Schreiber. Okay, please proceed. Who, who's presenting?
Uh, Cynthia, do you want me to run through the plans?
Yes, please. Sure, you can.
Uh, hello, good afternoon. This is Mark Schreiber, uh, architect, uh, three seventy Goss Lane, Lancaster, Massachusetts. Um, so basically, this is a three-story wood structure. Uh, we have, uh, two units on the first floor and second floor. And what we're proposing is owner-occupied, uh, third unit in the basement area. Um, so we've basically been into ISD, and, um, the one major element that they had asked for was a front entry. Um, so the thing I'm not seeing is this is not actually an updated floor plan. This, this is, um, this is outdated in the fact that we added a front door, um, on the basement level. If you want, I can share screen, um, and, and show the current, um, floor plan if you'd like.
Um, you're unable to share screen, unfortunately.
Okay, no problem. So, so if we can just page back up, um, just to look at the plans again?
Can you let them know what page, page you want them to go to?
So the, the page that's half on the top of the screen, I'd like to see that sheet. Okay, so, okay, so right on where it says new basement floor plan, right above the N, and then the dimension above that, there's currently a door planned for that facade, and ISD basically wanted the entry visible from the street. I, even though we have an existing side entry, which is our, kind of a second or third means of egress, if you will, they wanted that front door. Um, so we've, we've got that on the plans. Um, again, this plan is just, is not simply updated. But that's basically it, just adding a basement unit to get the total to three, and it's going to be owner-occupied, um, unit.
Mr. Hampton, do you have anything else, uh, that we don't have to refer to?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Jeff Hampton, BPDA. No, what you have is what we have. Um, as you saw in our recommendation, we didn't have any elevations in the basement. We're not necessarily opposed to the project, it's just, uh, not knowing what, you know, the heights are in the basement. Um, we were recommending deferral until we saw those, so that's all.
Thank you.
Uh, sure, to respond to that, we've got an excess of nine, nine-and-a-half feet of ceiling height in the basement. Um, so there's, uh, plenty of, um, existing height. Um, we actually intend to bring the floor up a little bit, um, so that we'll, we'll end up with roughly an eight-foot ceiling height in the basement occupiable unit.
So, Mr. Hampton, maybe I should ask a different question. Do you, do you need those, uh, plans before you, uh, or, or can you see them after? To confirm height, et cetera?
We, we can see them after, as long as ISD sees them as well. I mean, that, that's one of the major things that we look at with basement units. If it's nine feet, it's, or if it's going to be eight feet, that's going to be fine. Obviously, it's just, we just didn't see it, and that's the reasoning for our recommendation.
Sure.
Questions from the board? Here are none. I'll take forward testimony.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Ross Cockham with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Our office would like to go on record, um, to defer to this board's judgment. Uh, some context about this proposal, uh, we had an in-buddies meeting in March of this year at six PM on the thirteenth of March. Uh, there were some questions about whether it be owner-occupied, some, you know, issues with recent tenants, uh, you know, rodent activity issues, stuff like that. But no real support or opposition given, just mainly people asking questions and, and just voicing some concerns about what was going on with the project itself. Um, as far as the civic association goes, the owners did meet with the local civic, which was Ashmont Adams. Uh, to my record and my notes, I do not have a letter of support or opposition on file, uh, but at this time, we'd like to defer to this board's judgment. Thank you.
Hello, uh, Madam Chair, members of, members of the board, Liam Remus from Counselor Fitzgerald's office. Our office would like to go on record in support of this proposal. Thank you.
Madam Chair, we have no, uh, raised hands.
Thank you. Uh, was that may I have a motion?
I'm motion to approve with, I know the BPDA doesn't usually want the inside, but do, do you want the inside, the review, uh, Mr. Hampton, just to check the basement height?
Uh, how about no building code release, just to catch off?
All right, motion to approve with no building code release.
Is that a second? Okay, Mr. Stunbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Next, we have three companion cases, and these are all mayor, uh, ma- Mayor's Office of Housing cases. First, we have case BOA 1588450 with the address of ninety-four Harvard Street. Then we have case BOA 1588457 with the address of eighty-four Harvard Street. And finally, we have case BOA 1588549 with an address also of eighty-four Harvard Street. With the applicant and/or their representative, please explain the case to the board.
Hi, I have made a couple of requests for our attorney, Jess Barty, to be promoted as well as my partner, Phil Cohen, and our architect, Elise Zoulius. If they haven't been promoted, us now, thanks.
They're all set.
Thank you. Okay, good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. Speaking, uh, for the applicant, I'm Jess Barty from the law firm of Robinson &amp; Cole with a business address of One Boston Place in Boston, zero two one zero eight. Today, I am joined, uh, with, joined by, uh, Marie Morissette, Phil Cohen, and Matt Robina from the project developer, Boston Communities. I'm also joined by, uh, our project architect, Elise Zoulias from Studio Lou's Arch decks. As described in our appeal filing and as shown on the site plans filed with the board, this appeal relates to the vacant parcel of land owned by the city of Boston and located at ninety-four Harvard Street in Dorchester for the proposed construction of a three-story multifamily residential structure that will contain four residential units. The proposed project is one hundred percent affordable with two units affordable to households making up to eighty percent of the area median income and two units affordable to households making up to one hundred percent of the area median income. All of the units are owner, are homeownership units. The Mayor's Office of Housing designated Boston Communities as the developer for the subject property along with other city-owned parcels along Harvard Street as part of its Welcome Home Boston Phase One program, which is designed to provide affordable homeownership opportunities within the city. The property at ninety-four Harvard is significantly undersized, and the project as proposed balances the difficult site conditions with the need for new affordable multifamily construction in the area, and it And it's our position that a literal enforcement of the zoning code provisions would render the project infuseable. At this point, I'll turn it over to Marie from Boston Communities to introduce herself and the project developer. Then I will turn it over to Elise Zoulias to review the project's design. And she will turn matters back to me to conclude with a review of the zoning relief that we are seeking pursuant to this appeal. Thank you, and I will pass it over to Marie.
Thank you, Jess. Again, good afternoon, Madam Chair. Good afternoon, board, and good afternoon to everyone on the call here here to discuss the project. I just wanted to, on behalf of the Boston Communities team, introduce myself. We're happy to be presenting these two projects here today. We feel really grateful to have the opportunity to continue to build homeownership in the city of Boston and look forward to you hearing the case that we're presenting and hopefully your approval as well. So without further ado, I'll pass it on to Elise to talk about the design of the project. Thank you.
Thank you, Marie. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Elise Zoulias, representing Studio Luce Architects, architects on the project. So as you can see on the site plan here, we are working within quite a small site. If you can go to the next slide, please. Thank you. And you can see we're utilizing the existing curb cut along Harvard Street and providing a driveway on plan left to provide two parking spaces at the rear of the site. We have been working to reduce the footprint as much as possible to be in keeping with the existing residences along Harvard Street, as you can see on the site plan here. And we are also providing utility spaces all at the ground floor along with our first of the four residential units. And so you can see that there is a fully accessible Group Two unit on this floor provided with ramp access coming off of Harvard Street. And then you can see the two utility spaces on this floor as well. We've provided a green buffer all the way around the right and front of the site to provide some greenery and provide some setbacks. Next slide, please. Looking at the second floor... Sorry, one more slide. Again, the second floor plan here, you can see we have another three-bedroom unit on the second floor with a small balcony provided at the front, looking out over Harvard Street. This is a Group One unit as per MOH guidelines. And as I mentioned before, we've been working to reduce the footprint as much as possible on the site. Next slide. Up on the third floor here, we're working within the gable roof structure to provide two studio units. Both will be Group One units and convertible as such. And you can see that the gable roof structure and dashed in here, we're also providing some dormers to allow for window openings and allow nice light coming into each unit. Next slide, please. And so here, you can see we're looking at a three-story structure for the four-unit residences. So we're looking at an 11-foot floor-to-floor height and a 42-foot-six overall building height. We're providing a gable roof structure with some small dormers to be in keeping with the budding residences on both sides along Harvard Street. Next slide. And the final slide, please. And here, you can see in the building section, we are providing full floor-to-floor heights for all of the units to have good ceiling heights within. And there will be no basement. For this project, all utility spaces will be located on the ground floor. And Jess, I'll pass it back to you.
Thanks very much, Elise. Okay, so as identified by the notice read at the start of this hearing, the proposed project requires zoning relief in the form of a use variance for the multifamily dwelling use proposed on the property and a variance from the off-street parking requirements for the Dorchester Neighborhood District. As Elise mentioned, we are proposing two parking spaces as opposed to the five parking spaces at 1.2 by spaces per unit as required by the Dorchester Neighborhood District. In addition, the proposed project also requires several dimensional variances. And I will list them as follows. Lot area, the current lot area is 4,284 square feet, where the minimum lot area in the sub-district is 5,000 square feet. We also are seeking a variance from the FAR. Our project proposes .99 as opposed to the .5 required by zoning. Building height in both stories and feet, we're seeking relief. We are proposing a three-story building as opposed to the two-and-a-half stories required by zoning. And the building height in feet is 42 feet and six inches as opposed to the maximum 35 feet under the zoning code. And lastly, we are seeking front yard depth relief. We are proposing front yard depth of six feet, nine inches as opposed to 15 feet. Side yard depth, we're proposing five feet as opposed to 10 feet required by zoning. And lastly, we are seeking relief from the rear yard setback. We are proposing 17 feet and two inches in the rear yard as opposed to 30 feet required by zoning. Our memorandum in support of this appeal, as filed with the board on April 5th, sets out our arguments in support of the relief that we are seeking for this project at 94 Harvard Street. And at this point, I am happy to conclude the formal presentation and make myself and the rest of the development team available to answer any questions the board may have. Thank you so much again for having us. We really appreciate it.
Thank you. Questions from the board? Is there anyone from Mayor's Housing who wants to say their words?
Yes. Hi, my name is Tara Sashbell. I'm a development officer with the Mayor's Office of Housing. As stated before, this project involves the disposition of city-owned land associated with the Welcome Home Boston program, which is an initiative to develop affordable homeownership in the city of Boston. As stated before, Boston Communities does need a developer for these sites. The project has gone through extensive community process, and they continue to meet with the community and ask for full support of the Mayor's Office of Housing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services confirmed that this went through a lengthy community process overseen by MOH. I know they also reached out to the WOW Coalition, who I think had some concerns about parking. I see their hands raised, so I'll let them continue on that. But at this time, we defer to the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there elected official offices? Can we get to public?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. My name is Iain Neil, City Councilor Brian Orwell. And as previously, they met with WOW, and there were some parking concerns. But all together, in terms of the project as it stands, they're not opposed to it. And with that, the council would like to be on record in support.
Oh, thank you. WOW Coalition, go ahead.
Oh, yeah, thank you very much for having me, guys. This is a long day, guys. But thank you for having me. I am only here... My name is Lekita Burke, and I am just the president of the Western Washington Coalition, and I'm just here to advocate for the community members, which, again, we are not here to stop any development. We appreciate development. Our only concern, like everybody else is saying, is that the parking is an issue. And the only reason why the parking would be an issue is because currently, right now, there's already issues on Main, Millen, and Spencer Street in regards to parking. And we were working, trying to work with transportation, the school and the residents in that area just to try to help mitigate these. And considering that you guys are building units that some of them don't come with parking, which will have a high impact in regards to our area, we just would like a little bit more time to be able to discuss that. And I understand that this project is... They have another project coming back in June. And so we were wondering if it was possible for us to be able to continue this discussion about the parking issues or if the developers can work with us in regards to the parking issues that are currently going on in regards to that area. And again, this is not to stop development. We like projects, we like development. We appreciate the affordable housing. But we also want to make sure that we get what we need for our community as well and that our residents are not going to keep the pitch as much as they could be.
Thank you. Rosie?
I have a few questions.
Can you say your name and address? And just let us know if you can support or opposition.
The Z, 5 Spencer Street, right behind 94. And I'm all for it. I'm all for it for homeownership particularly, which is what's happening. But I'm concerned about the size of the lot. And at the end, I thought it was going to be a lot to family, a lot to family. But now I'm here, I'm sure, parking and all this. And I'm like, where, where is it going to go? And I'm concerned that it's going to be a close proximity with my home and possibly, you know, fire or something like that. I'm just thinking, hey, you know, is it going to be, you know, good in space for me to have that with me? Because I'm right here. So that was one concern. And also parking is another concern. It's like the highway here. So I'm just worried about 94, 84, and construction going on at the same time and it being a disaster. It is crazy every day now. And then I'm also concerned about the trees. That's 80% of the city that's laying on my roof as well and hanging over the property. I love trees. I don't want to never, ever get rid of trees. I'm pretty much around my home. But I think it makes sense to trim them, you know, so that way, you guys will have to do that anyway, whether it's a garden. There's other concerns, but those were significant concerns for the development and homeownership particularly. Does that end the whole morning?
Okay, Alyssa?
Yes, good, good afternoon, everyone. I'm just basically, I guess, affirming or confirming what you said. I'm also a resident of WOW. The parking...
And then, and then I have to move?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm at 5 Millen Street. And my name is Alyssa Fleming.
Thank you.
And am too concerned about the parking. We are also very much so solution-oriented. We have put before the developers and also some politicians as well, some solutions, or a solution, which we've actually put out there in regards to a lot that is very close to where I live, 5 Millen. That is a city property, city property. And there's nothing on it right now. And so I'm just throwing that out just to let you guys know that we do, we're okay with having, you know, new development. But we do really want a partnership with this. And again, I always use the analogy, you know, we want to be neighborly and continue to be neighborly, right? So thank you so much for hearing me, and hopefully that can be considered as well. Thank you.
No additional questions?
Would the applicant like to respond to the issue around the trees and parking?
Very happy to respond on behalf of Boston Communities. First, I just want to say the WOW organization, Alyssa, thank you. They've been absolutely amazing to work with throughout this entire process. And they're absolutely right. Their very solutions-oriented and have been supportive and also pushed back at the right times. We're so, on behalf of Boston Communities, we're absolutely committed to helping with the neighborhood parking issues. We have two potential solutions, potentially reinstating parking along the home school, which is by the development. And then there is also that parcel that is city-owned that was just mentioned. And we hope to continue those conversations hopefully at the meetings next week. To respond to Rosie and elaborate on her comments, there is a tree, the one that she was mentioning, that's straddling our properties. And the tree does significantly overhang her roof. It's my understanding that someone from the city of Boston went out either last week or the week before to investigate the tree. And we might hear back at some point in the future about maybe some trimming that can potentially prevent squirrels and other animals from getting onto her roof. And we want to be respectful of that. And we will also... There is substantial setback between our properties. And I'm happy to have a conversation with her and make sure that she has the latest plans, which I believe she does, but it's worth confirming.
Thank you. Questions from the board? Okay, hearing none, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Okay, Mr. Stunbridge.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Mr. Aiken.
Yes.
Mr. Collins. Mr. Collins, you're on mute.
Sorry, yes.
Thank you, Ms. Panado.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Board?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, everyone. Are we going to...
Thank you, have a good day.
Sorry, I thought we had to beep, so...
I'm sorry?